Beaverton School Board September 29th Board Meeting. We appreciate you all being with us here this evening. We know it's a beautiful fall night and we'd probably like to be outside. And there's some little thing on TV that maybe will get our interest as well. So we appreciate you being with us tonight to take care of the school board's business. First order is, Board members, do you have any changes to the agenda? I do not see any changes to the agenda, so we will start right off with our guest this evening. We'll be hearing from our Beaverton Education Association President Sarah Schmidt to greet us tonight. Sarah?
Hi, everybody. Thank you Chair Tim Chuck. Superintendent Grodding and members of the board, my name is Sarah Schmidt, and I am the President of the Beaverton Education Association. We always like to start our monthly BEA meetings with a reflection of what's going well, because we can learn a lot from the things that are working. So I want to start tonight with some kudos. First of all, to our members, I know educators really love the work that we do. We're really leaning into our collaboration pillar. We know we learn a lot from our colleagues, and we're really leaning into that as we start a very challenging school year. We heard repeatedly from our members over the first couple of weeks of this school year that their building administrators were incredibly supportive and understanding and flexible as we start this unique school year. We've made as a district a commitment to anti-racism work in implementing culturally relevant practices, historically accurate teaching and curriculum this year. I'm grateful that the members of this board have voice and urgency to address and dismantle racism in our system and create better systems of accountability. I'm also really grateful to BSD leaders Superintendent Grodding, Pat McCreary, and David Williams, who have prioritized partnerships with BEA in these efforts over the last few weeks, and we look forward to continuing that work together this year. In the spirit of learning and growing, I want to talk tonight about a problem of practice that I believe can be found in every single school community right now. It's that we are on Week Three and our members are burning out. The expectations and burdens that have been placed on teachers' shoulders are grinding staff to a fine dust. Educators are putting in 14 to 16-hour days and working on the weekends just to keep up. And this is not a matter of learning one new digital platform. We have a lot of folks in our district who are very fluent in technology and digital platforms. And I don't think this is just the getting into the swing of a new school year. I can only imagine how our students are handling this and how challenging the start of this new school year has been for families. I have no doubt that you'll hear some doom and gloom messaging about the district's financial forecast today due to this pandemic and the economic crisis that it has caused. But I want to remind you that our whole community is going to fare better if we're listening and responding quickly to feedback from students, parents, and staff. So as I mentioned, what's being asked of educators this year is unsustainable, and there's no end in sight. We can't even comprehend November, let alone winter break or June. Our leadership team has spent over 30 hours over the last couple of months in negotiations over working conditions, and we haven't had a meaningful acknowledgement of the incredible amount of time, energy, and emotion that our members are pouring into their work. There hasn't been a significant change in the expectations for staff that's giving them the breathing room that they need to do their jobs well. Luckily, ODE is encouraging districts to focus on ongoing reflection and iteration of the plans that have been created, as well as cultivating connection and relationships during this school year. This is the very same thing that we're asking for. We've launched this school year, we've created something that we've never had to do before, and educators have some feedback. The folks who are closest to the work can tell you what's working and what's not working. They have ideas about how we can better serve students and what their barriers are to increase student engagement. Our educators know how parents are faring, more or less, and how we can better partner with families to do this work. So the question I want to leave you with tonight, actually I have a few questions, is are you going to listen? Are you ready to take the expertise that's available right now in our system from students, from families, from staff, and use it to make this year work out well for our whole community? Are we ready to lean into this year as a collective we and utilize all of the brilliance of our students and our staff to make the best of this situation that I think we would all choose to not be in? So I know that some of you have been receiving quite a few emails from educators who want desperately to support their students and thriving this year, but they're struggling. Please don't just send them an auto-response. I hope that you read each email, hear the educators' concerns, take them seriously, and find a way that we can work together to make this year a success. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, very much for your comments. Appreciate you being here this evening. Next up, we will hear from Amy Knudsen, the President of the OSEA. Amy?
Good evening. I apologize, I don't have any video today. Having some technical issues, but I am here. So good evening to Superintendent Grodding, to the Beaverton School Board, to the school staff, and to the community members. I come to you tonight feeling torn. On the one hand, many of our classified staff have taken on new challenges of distance learning with grace and persistence. They have been called upon to do their jobs in completely new ways. They have risen to meet challenges and have adjusted their mindsets to make this school as successful as possible for our students and families. I am so proud of them. I see those employees working hard to overcome setbacks and frustrations. I see them giving extra effort to learn new strategies and techniques to reach students. And I'm humbled by parents who are taking on these new responsibilities on the job while also supporting their children's, their own children's educational needs. I'm grateful to the district for envisioning new ways that they can serve and continue to respond to the complex and changing needs of our schools in this time. But I'm also feeling frustrated and worried, along with nearly 600 classified staff who are not being utilized well, those who have received further notices in the past week. I feel for those who are scrambling to figure out how they will continue to support themselves and their families in this time, and for those who are wondering if they can afford to stay in a job that continues to pull back on resources that they depend on. Hearing that the district is saving money for the next biennium by taking wages away from employees who have selflessly served the district in essential roles, such as feeding our students and safely transporting them to and from school each day, is disheartening. It is especially difficult knowing that these cuts are targeted only at classified staff and that some of the lowest-paid employees in the district are shouldering these cost savings. We all believe that there will come a time when students will enter our buildings, and those roles will again become essential. In the meantime, there are so many needs in our school community that we could be filling. We could use this as an opportunity to do more for our students than we normally, that we normally don't have the people power to do. When we do go back to our buildings, the classified staff that have been able to weather the storm will be there eager to serve our students the way we always have. There will be, however, left by wonderful people who couldn't hang in there, and I'm saddened by that. The longer we go without offering all of our members regular hours and consistent pay, the more we are going to lose. There will be financial costs associated with filling empty positions, but more importantly, there will be human costs when staff and students return expecting to see familiar faces that make our school community brighter and better, and find that some of the great ones are missing. To all the classified staff that are working harder than ever this fall, I thank you. To all the classified staff that are doing every assignment you are given with gratefulness and hoping for more work to come soon, I stand with you. To the classified staff from either category who are struggling, my heart goes out to you. To the school board and the administration, I remind you that classified staff in our district are so much more than just numbers. We are a diverse group of people who have chosen to invest in our students because we care, and we are ready and willing to meet students' needs beyond the classroom walls. Please invest in us so that we can continue to serve our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Amy, for your comments, and appreciate you being joining us this evening. We also have, the last week, we had comments from our public, and the board has been given those comments, as well as there are, you can find them on our board book right now for anyone that would like to see what all the comments are. We had 13 comments, and I just roughly went through everything from maybe looking again at the boundary process to safety in our schools, equitable access with Zoom, looking at our quality equity standards, and making sure that we're applying them to all of our schools, teaching African-American history better, and making sure that our, all of our children, no matter what their socioeconomic class learns and has access to learning anti-racism, and also racial inequality, and making sure that all of our students have access to different kinds of curriculum, and as well as keeping our SROs in our schools. And finally, the last one, which I think we're all feeling is, Zoom is just not quite working yet, and we wish that we could do something else. And that probably summarizes what we're, what we're all feeling, but it's the world that we're living in right now. So all, all folks will be getting a comment either from staff or from the board, thanking them for their, for their public comments. Next up, we will start with reports, and first we will be hearing from Superintendent Grodding. Superintendent?
Thank you Chair Tim Chuck. As we said, we're in our third week of school, and I would say that everything being considered, we've, we've enjoyed a good start to our school year due to the exceptional efforts of our students, families, teachers, support staff, and administrators. We continue to work through issues of COVID-19, connectivity for our students and families, providing wraparound services for our most vulnerable students, and adjusting to the various issues due to being in comprehensive distance learning. All staff are working hard to meet the needs of our students and families. This is definitely a new learning curve for all of us, but we are getting better every day in these difficult times. Want to talk a little bit about bargaining and adjusting working conditions in COVID-19. Teachers, support staff, and administrators are working diligently in finding new ways to meet the needs of students and families in the COVID-19 era. It often requires learning new strategies, adjusting to new safety, attendance, technology, and instructional practices that are outside of our control. Our operations, human resources, IT, and teaching and learning departments are working hard every day to alleviate as many of these issues as possible for all staff in these difficult times. The district has been and will continue to be committed to finding common ground with bargaining units and other groups to ensure we are doing the best for our students and families. And this is just a difficult time, and we, people are having to pivot, whether it's administration, teachers, different groups. Sometimes the rules change on us every day, and so it is difficult. And understanding regardless if you're a classified, certified administrator, a student, or a family, it's very difficult for all of us. But we will get through this and as we move forward. I want to talk a little bit about enrollments. Beaverton, like other school districts in Oregon, we are experiencing significant declines in enrollment due to COVID-19. At this time, the Beaverton School District, we're estimating a drop of approximately 1,300 students. The majority of this decline is at the elementary level with a significant decline in kindergarten. The district is currently working to identify exactly the various reasons for the decline in the status of students not enrolling in our schools. As we finalize these enrollment numbers, and if the significant decline continues, we will be overstaffed and will most likely need to make adjustments to stay within our staffing allocation ratio model and budget in order to prepare for the next biennium. I have directed our staffing allocation team and our business team to review staffing and enrollment to make recommendations. And one thing that we heard in the last budget crisis that we went through was from bargaining units, from our community and everything, we need to live within our means. We need to be transparent and live within our means. And while I don't mean to be doom and gloom, I also, I am going to be transparent, and we are going to live within our means. And as I said before, this is not specific to the Beaverton School District. We have constant communication with the six largest districts, and they are also actually experiencing higher decreases in enrollment than we are percentage-wise. My goal is to find out where these students are, try to get them re-enrolled, make them feel safe, but we just have folks that are out there that are scared to send their students to school. It's a safety issue, and/or they're electing to educate their children in different ways because of COVID-19. We continue to market, we continue to work, and we will continue to work with that. I just sent the board today and staff, I was on the phone with Colt Gill this morning about the 10-day drop rule. There seems to be a lot of confusion, so I called him up. We actually had a conversation about 5 o'clock this morning, and he got some really exact information, and I forwarded that to the board today, and our staff has that, and that will help us better determine exactly where our numbers are, who we can count, and how we can count them. And at the next board work session, we will have some solid data for the board. Return to school, you're going to hear from our folks tonight on return to school. We continue to monitor COVID-19 data in both Washington and Multnomah County. And remember, the reason we're monitoring in Multnomah County is about, over about 15% of our staff actually reside in Multnomah County with up to 30, 35% of specific school staff residing in Multnomah County. We are planning for comprehensive distance learning and determining when it will be safe for our students and staff to return to in-person instruction. Recently, as you know, the data has been moving in the wrong direction to seriously consider any large group in-person instruction for the immediate future. At this time, we are still committed to reviewing data and going from quarter to quarter when making decisions to return to in-person instruction. And I said the data's been going in the wrong way. The data's been going in the wrong way since early, since the first part of September. And when I say we look at quarter to quarter, you will hear tonight a recommendation, which I support. When we do look at the data and we see that it is highly, highly unlikely, or maybe even impossible for us to return, we want to notify our staff, our students, and our families as soon as possible to let them know the direction so that they can plan and prepare for their next steps. We will continue to offer small group instruction for evaluation assessment, some connectivity, and to serve those students that comprehensive distance learning simply cannot serve due to cognitive, physical, and other significant barriers. These students compromise our most vulnerable and marginalized. And right now, we have our special education, our multilingual department in teaching and learning trying to work on a plan that we can meet the needs of these students. It's very, very difficult. It's, it's extremely difficult when you're taking in all of the social distancing rules, the cohort rules, and everything. It's a very, very difficult process, but we are, we're very interested in looking to see how we can possibly do small group instruction that comprehensive distance learning simply does not work for. And later this evening, as I said, you'll hear from our, our team and plans to move forward in COVID-19 area. And I just want to take a little bit, and I've said it before, but I just want to really take a shout-out for our operations team and our teaching and learning staff. Both of these being led by Deputy Superintendent Mead and Deputy Superintendent Haseman. These people were working around the clock to do whatever they can to do good things for our students and families. Unbelievable team. We have folks calling us every day, and they want to know what Beaverton's doing. We're working as hard as we can. I want to talk to you a little bit about childcare. As you know, the county was allocated money for childcare. They've also allocated some of this money to the Beaverton School District. We are continuing to work with our county and other school districts in Washington County to provide childcare. Funds are available, but there are many issues to finalize before we can implement. Deputy Superintendent Mead and assigned staff continue to work with other school districts, childcare providers, and the county so we may be able to offer services and financial aid to our families. It is a work in progress, progress, and we are working with other stakeholders. I don't think it's getting held up on our end right now, but when you're working with multiple stakeholders and waiting for some rules to come down to how you can distribute the money, it takes some time. But really looking forward to being able to hopefully subsidize some of our families. Economic forecast and financial update. Later this evening, you will hear an extensive report from Assistant Superintendent of Business Services Mike Schofield regarding the district's financial status, latest economic forecasts, and strategies to prepare for the challenges facing all school districts in the next biennium due to Oregon's current economic recession caused by COVID-19. It will be important to chart a prudent path that encompasses both short-term and long-term strategies and goals as we move forward to balance revenues and expenditures, what's expected of us from our staff as well as our community. And finally, but probably most importantly, I want to talk to you a little bit about anti-racism and equity work. As we close in on the end of the 2020 calendar year, we will all probably look back at the numerous challenges and historical significance of incidents and issues impacting our schools and country. Combating racism, promoting justice for all, addressing a global health pandemic, experiencing significant economic issues, and navigating social and political difference will make 2020 a defining time in our history and a path none of us could have predicted. As a school district, we are committed to providing an inclusive environment for all students, families, and staff. Our data indicates we have not accomplished this in the past. This will be uncomfortable and difficult work, calling for courage, a sense of urgency, and acknowledging diverse perspectives as long as they do not promote violence, hate, racism, or discrimination. Striving to make our classrooms and schools inclusive of multiple and diverse viewpoints will allow our students to engage their critical thinking skills and allow staff and students the opportunity to discuss the contemporary issues that are impacting us today and will influence their futures. At this time, we are working with several internal and external stakeholders to move this work forward. Later this evening, you will also hear about a component of our equity task work being spearheaded by our school board and being attended by board members Donna Tyner and Tom Collette. In addition, late tomorrow, there will be a message going out to staff and community regarding our equity, our anti-racism stance as we move forward in these difficult times. And I believe the board members have that, do, they have that message right now. So we wanted to make sure that you had that, but that will be going out to staff and our community members, and I believe that's all I have. Chair Tim Chuck.
Thank you Superintendent Grodding. Next up, we're going to hear about, from a report on comprehensive distance learning. And Brian, I'm going to start off with you, and I'm going to let you orchestrate, because I know, or Jenny, do you want, one of you, and let you call who, who first. Hand the floor over to you.
That sounds great. Becky, I'll go ahead and start, and then turn it over to Brian. So, good evening, school board members, Superintendent Grodding. Tonight, our team will be sharing with you the successes and challenges of comprehensive distance learning. As you know, this has been a monumental lift for our district, our team, and our staff. We never could have imagined that we would be starting a school in a comprehensive distance learning environment. Okay, is, sorry, I lost my place for a minute. It has taken a huge amount of effort, diligence, and dedication from our teachers, our staff, and our administrators to begin the year in remote learning. We would also like to sincerely acknowledge the incredible work that our staff has done in the last few weeks. Our teachers and our staff are working tirelessly as we work together to serve our students in such a challenging environment. We would like you to know that our team is committed to problem solve and support our staff so they may overcome the barriers that have been present during remote learning. We would also like to help reduce the struggles of our staff as they continue to work hard to support our students and families. Our team will work to try to solve technical problems as well as structural problems that will help ease this tough transition. We want our staff to know that we value and support the work they are doing for our students and families. Tonight, you will hear from Brian Seega, our Administrator for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. He will give us an update on comprehensive distance learning. We will also be hearing from Danielle Hudson, our Executive Administrator for Student Services. She will be giving an update on behavioral health and wellness. And finally, our executive administrators in teaching and learning will share with you the successes and the challenges that we are seeing in all of our Beaverton schools. We will also have time for questions at the end. So thank you for this opportunity to share with you this evening. Brian, it's all yours.
Thanks, Jenny. Appreciate the introduction. Appreciate the acknowledgement of all the work our teachers and families are engaging in. Thank you Board Chair Tim Chuck, all board members, Superintendent Grodding, and all staff. I appreciate the opportunity to update you on comprehensive distance learning as well as my colleagues that are here with me tonight. David, could you please advance the slide? So just a reminder of the few key pieces of distance learning that we've been talking to you about for the past few months and how we want to make sure to distinguish comprehensive distance learning from our experiences that we had last spring. Comprehensive distance learning calls for students to be engaging in learning five days a week. Students have the opportunity to do that in a variety of different ways, sometimes in person with their teachers, or, you know, at the same time as their teachers, and sometimes doing work and tasks on their own. Teachers are using consistent tools to interact with their students. We are using Zoom for a way to conduct our, you know, our one-on-one or our live meetings. We're using either Seesaw or Canvas, depending on your grade level, for teachers to deliver instructional materials, deliver lessons, and deliver all the resources that they need to, to our students. And we're using Synergy, in particular, the Student View and the Parent View apps for things like grades and report cards, and a little bit more of that formal record-keeping that we need to have. And just as a reminder, as we're becoming closer, not there yet, but getting closer to the appropriate time, we will be awarding grades and eventually awarding credits for our classes. Next slide, please, David. So we're, early on, we have about two weeks of attendance data that we're able to share right now. School started on September 14th officially for students. And since then, in those two weeks, we have an overall attendance rate of right around 95% as you can see on the screen, and you can see the breakdown of elementary with a little bit higher than the average at 96.8%. Middle school's about 92%, and high school's right around that 95% attendance rate. I think while that's certainly an increase from what we saw in the spring, we're very cognizant and want to caution all to realize that attendance in, in distance learning, well, attendance always is not the only indicator of success in attendance and distance learning. We certainly have a lot more engagement to do with our students and with our families to make sure that students are being successful. There are plenty of distractions out there on distance learning, maybe even more so, or definitely more so than in the classroom. And so just being in attendance isn't the, is certainly not the only metric, but it's one of the few data points we can look at, being that we're so early into the, into the semester. David, next slide, please. So I want to elaborate on a few Superintendent Grodding's main points, or a few of his points specifically, as they related to the metrics of COVID-19 and the requirements of ready-school, safe learners. Just to reiterate what Superintendent said, ready-school, safe learners calls on the school district to consider the metrics of any county where there's at least 10% of your staff living, residing in, in that county. And so we have approximately 15% of our staff in Multnomah County. And so we took a little deeper dive, we considered it further, really wanted to look to see if, was that just the schools on the east end of our district, or was it throughout our district? Being that the requirements for elementary schools would, would kind of dictate that they would be the first schools to return, we did look most closely at our elementary and our K-8 options, and about 75% of those schools within their own staffs exceed that 10% threshold. So we are, we have committed to, and we are tying the metrics of Multnomah County to Washington County for any reopening decisions. And really what that means is both Multnomah County and Washington County would need to meet any level of metrics for us to make any decisions about hybrid instruction or in-person. for us to make any decisions about hybrid instruction or in-person instruction. Next slide, please. So I want to talk a little bit, remind you all and talk a little bit about what the metrics are that would allow us to bring our students back into, into the schools. Though I've been prefacing over about the past month and really making sure people understand that when we meet these metrics, we're still required to and will be meeting all of the safety requirements in Ready School Safe Learners. So that's the first three chapters of Ready School Safe Learners, which that really means all of the social distancing, all of the hygiene, all of the, the pieces that Ready School Safe Learners calls us to do for student and staff safety. We will be doing that. So when we talk about returning to school, when the metrics are met, we're really talking about returning in some sort of a hybrid. As you recall, we're not able to meet all of those safety requirements if we were to bring back our full student body on the same day or at the same time. So that's just a bit of a clarification. We are talking, these metrics would be to enter into that, that hybrid model. So in order for us to do that, the metrics say that we have to see a, a new case rate for a week of 10 new cases per 100,000 residents during that week. And then you have to have that rate or that number of new cases, that 10 per 100,000 for three weeks in a row. Additionally, you have to have a test positivity rate. So if you took the total number of tests, at least 95% of them would need to come back negative. And so you can only have 5% or fewer coming back positive. So for the, for the next couple of minutes, I really want you to have in mind that 10 number, that 10 new cases per 100,000 residents. What, what there is an exception to that is when we're talking about our youngest learners, our grades pre-K through, through third grade, that number can go up to 30 to enter back into a hybrid. So the two numbers that I really want you to, to most consider right now are the 10 cases per 100,000. That really then means that's really for our grades four through 12 to be able to come back in a hybrid. And then the, the number 30, and so that's 30 cases per 100,000. And that would be for our grades pre-K through three to come back into a hybrid. David, could you advance the next slide, please? The metrics are released to the school system every Monday. So every Monday they're released, and what they really are is the count for the pre, for the previous week. So, you know, yesterday was, or their data was released actually on September 28th. It's a typo on the screen for the week that began on September 20th. And if you look at the, if you look at the metrics, you'll see, like Dawn said, they're not headed in the right direction, nor are they anywhere near that 10 cases per 100,000. Washington County has 37 cases per 100,000, which is an increase from previous weeks. Multnomah County has 45 cases per 100,000 residents, which is a significant increase from previous weeks. I do list the test positivity rates. I'm, I do need to share the caveat. The state has asked us to focus on the 10 and the 30 number for right now, for the next few weeks. Do the impact that the fires have had on the testing and the where, how that may skew the test positivity rates in that metric. So if we, if we really do focus on the 10 cases per 100,000, we can see that neither Washington County nor Multnomah County are close to that and that they're both trending in the wrong direction to consider a, a return to hybrid instruction. So the next slide, I'll talk about what that means for our planning. So what that means, remember, grades four through 12 need to see, we, before we can consider it safe for staff and for our students to return, for grades four through 12, we would need to have the metrics, say, 10 cases per 100,000 students or 100,000 community members, residents of that county. So originally, like Dawn said, we've committed to communicating this on a quarter-by-quarter basis. Our first quarter will, will end shortly in, in mid-November, and second quarter will begin on November 16th. Unfortunately, our students in grades four through 12 will need to remain in comprehensive distance learning for that next quarter. And really, the reason is the metrics just are nowhere near where they would need to be to allow us to, to implement our safety plans, to implement instructional plans for a hybrid model. I, I do have the slight caveat. Dawn frequently mentions the need to pivot. We are constantly looking at data. We're constantly working with the state. We're constantly working with our school district partners throughout the state. Should the guidance from the Department of Education and Oregon Health Authority, as, as we learn more about the disease, as we learn more about the virus, and as resources change, if the guidance changes, we will certainly consider how that may impact our plans. And if the data, if the numbers take a significantly different direction than, than where they are now, we would certainly consider. That being said, we are communicating out to, to our, you know, to the school board now, to our families, to our staff, that comprehensive distance learning for grades four through 12 will need to remain through second quarter, which then would have a target date for a return to hybrid of February 8th. If we can think about grades pre-K through three, frankly, the data is not suggesting, does not give us much more optimism. The data is still trending in the wrong direction, and the data is still significantly higher than it would need to be to consider a return to hybrid. However, in early September, the, the, that was different. In, in early September, before the impacts of the fires, before Labor Day, the data was suggesting that we could perhaps return. Not knowing how the next few weeks will go, should the data turn back to where it was in early September, we could potentially still consider that November 16th date to begin our, our kind of steps back into hybrid. We don't want to pay, we don't want to put false hope in there. We don't want to communicate something that's incorrect. However, we're not yet saying that comprehensive distance learning is extended for the pre-K through grade three, though that's certainly in our discussions and in our planning. By October 19th, we will have, we will have communicated whether that extension will occur. And again, it'll occur on a quarter-by-quarter basis. So we're going to keep a close eye on the data. Unfortunately, it's not headed in the right direction, but we are going to look another week or two to see if it starts to trend. Remember, the pre-K through three has to be at that 30 cases per 100,000. And then finally, what I'll leave you with is what Dawn said. We know despite our high attendance rate, despite all the wonderful efforts of our teachers, we know that some of our students are just unable to successfully access and successfully engage in comprehensive distance learning. The state does allow us an opportunity called limited in-person instruction. The requirements are extremely tight. The safety protocols are very high. However, there are opportunities for us to think about bringing very small groups of students in, in addition to the evaluations that are already occurring, but bringing small groups of students in to support them with the needs that they have during distance learning. We'll continue to update the board as we expand those opportunities, and we'll continue to work to find new opportunities, always keeping students' staff safety at the forefront. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Hudson for information on our behavioral health and wellness plans.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Tim Chuck, the School Board and Superintendent Grodding. I'm excited to be here to talk to you about our behavioral health and wellness teams. So one of the things that happened in the spring is we were really trying to gather information about what was impacting students from accessing CDL. And so entering the school year, we have implemented our behavioral health and wellness teams at every school. So this is something new. They're working on this. They're working on how they work as a team, how they gather data. But really, their focus right now of this team is to figure out who are the students who are not engaging in CDL, and then identifying what the barriers are to that engagement, and then providing interventions to overcome those barriers. We have asked these teams to collect referrals. So the first line of defense is always our classroom teacher. They have the relationships with the students. They have, they make that connection on a regular basis. So that is really our front line of defense. But then if that is not working and we're still seeing a student not engage, we've asked those, those teachers then to submit a referral to the behavioral health and wellness team. And then what they do is they track data on who are the students who are coming through to them? What are they doing to help kind of intervene with the family or the student? And then tracking to see, did the referral produce a positive outcome and the student is engaging? Do they need ongoing support? Or is the student not engaging? So that is what we've asked them to do, and they've collected data and reported on Friday for the first two weeks. So go ahead and, next slide, David. So as you can see, we had a significant amount of referrals that came in through our schools. So over 1,700 students were directed to our behavioral health and wellness teams. And those team members include our counselors, our social workers, our student success coaches, our school psychs, our nurses, administrators, and those team members then kind of said, okay, what are we going to do? We're going to send emails. We're going to do phone calls. We're going to use this app called Talking Apps, which is a way to text families in their native language. Where they scheduled individual Zoom meetings with families or students, and they even completed 293 home visits, went out to homes and connected with students and connected with families. So we have a range of students who were referred. The highest number of referrals came from our Hispanic, or Hispanic students in the district, so our Latinx students, but followed by white students. And then you can see that primarily, most of the referrals were males, but it was previous, or it was pretty much split between males and females in terms of who needed this additional outreach. Next slide, please. One of the things that this reporting is helping us as a district do is we had a lot of ideas about what was the barrier to accessing CDL. We thought maybe, you know, it was Wi-Fi or a device. And so we were putting into a lot of work to try to figure out, okay, how do we solve this problem? So we wanted to collect some information to say, well, what truly is the barrier? So our top, the top barriers to CDL when our teams reached out to families is we were seeing a lot of families that are, students that are struggling because they might not have an adult available to help them do their schoolwork. Wi-Fi access, which I know that our IT department has been striving really hard on. Some of it has been a language barrier. I know our multilingual department has been reaching out, but there were some families who didn't even know we started school. We, there is family work schedules, so if there's not a parent available, maybe there's some kind of crisis the family's dealing with. We've had some basic needs unmet, so I know we have several schools, and we've increased the number of schools that are going to be having food boxes and pantries. And we're also looking, ABSA met on Friday, so that is the group of administrators. And we're going to do a push to kind of look at how we can get some basic needs, hygiene materials to get out to families. We're seeing increased need around food insecurity and houselessness, and then again, childcare issues within homes. Next slide, please. So really, some of the, some of the top interventions that we've done in order to kind of overcome these barriers is people are just doing individual check-in sessions. We have staff who are setting up times. They're, they're calling, you know, in the evenings, they're calling in the mornings. They're finding times to see like, when are you available? When can we connect with you? They're going out and dropping off school supplies and materials. They're, they're doing those home visits. They're figuring out what it is. I know at several elementary schools, they went out and purchased cardboard, like science fair poster boards so that people could have, students could have their own work area. So really seeing what they need. Our, our schools have been pushing out devices. IT has been doing that, making sure we have hotspots, and then really streamlining our process of referring students to our help center to make sure that we're addressing houselessness and food insecurity. So our teams are going to continue to provide this report, and I will continue to, I will share this information with the school board as we continue to have a baseline of what we're needing or what, and what families are needing and what we're seeing and how we're intervening with those families. So thank you for your time tonight. And I guess we're turning it over to our elementary executive administrators. Thank you.
Thanks, Danielle. Good evening, everybody. Superintendent Grodding, School Board. Nice to be with you this evening and to spend a little time talking about what's going on in our K-12 schools. The summer into the fall, as you all well know, has been both challenging, but also has been rewarding for, for our elementary schools. The challenge for principals and teachers is leading and teaching in these unprecedented times. But it's also important to know that there's a lot of joy that schools have found in the return of teachers, the return of kids, kids being back in schools, and we are seeing wonderful, wonderful things happening. As execs, we've been working closely with the elementary principals in support of their work and their launch of the year. Principals and teachers are working tremendously hard, and there's a lot going on. And principals are leading with a deep sense of possibility and intention, and teachers are doing the same in their classrooms. We have been and will continue to be working with principals on their leadership in a variety of ways. We meet with them once a month as a whole group. We meet with them once a month in our regional executive groups, and we also meet twice a month with them one-on-one. We have some very specific and focused areas of work this year around anti-bias, anti-racist leadership, consistent curriculum and instruction, instruction implementation in all classrooms, and meaningful feedback to both students and teachers. And these focus areas all fall under the umbrella of collective efficacy, meaning that it's our collective work and our beliefs and our leadership moves that are going to make a difference, not any one individual working on their own. Our work this fall has been centered on how to lead well in a CDL environment and how to support teachers during these difficult times. And it's about continuing to help and support principals in their work with teachers and teachers with their work with students, not just in CDL, but over the course of the entire year. We're going to share with you tonight some specific challenges and successes that we've experienced at the elementary schools this fall. And it's just important to note that the principals are a remarkable group of people. They work tremendously hard. They care deeply about teachers, about their kids, about their communities. And on behalf of Kathleen and Nicole, myself, it's just an absolute honor to work with such a group. So Kathleen is going to talk about some of the challenges we've seen this fall.
Um, our global pandemic has led us to where we are today, and I think we can all agree that teaching and learning through Zoom is not what we want for our students. We are in uncharted territory, and we continue to navigate the endless obstacles and barriers. And I think many of the people who spoke before me have talked about those barriers with you from Sarah to Dawn. And so I'm going to be repeating, and I'm going to be repeating some of the work that is already being done globally, K-12. But this is information that's just from the elementary level. We are proud of our teachers, our principals, parents, and students, and everyone is doing the best that they can do on any given day. This is new for all of us, and this means that not every day will everything go smooth. Probably the area that we hear the most about right now, which we anticipated, was about technology. It was about struggles with passwords. It was about connectivity issues, whether it was in a teacher's home or if it was in a student's home. It was about devices. You know, we've worked really hard over the summer trying to make sure that every child has a device and connectivity to the schools. One of the things that we'll continue to do is to make sure that our kids do have a device. We have very few kids that don't, but we're still working on that. A lot of our, our challenge has been that some parents feel that what it looked like in the spring is so different than what it looks like in the fall that the kids are, have too much screen time. And so we're having to navigate conversations about that with parents. Another issue that we never would have predicted was the smoke. The smoke made it so that we had to cancel events that we were trying to do in order to bring a connection between our families and our students and the school. The smoke also made us cancel some events like distribution of devices that on the first day of school, we still had kids that we had to deliver devices to on Monday and Tuesday of the first week of school. And the connections with families and kids, when you talk to the principals, they'll say that it felt like a disconnect between what has been and what should be. And that is, you know, being a warm and welcoming environment for families and students for a new school year. Our schools were closed all summer long. It was difficult for families to connect with the schools so that they could register their kids, so they could make sure that the children understood what they were supposed to do or any paperwork that needed to be done. One of the things that the schools will say that the families have been so patient with working with the schools, knowing that we are working very hard to make this work, and we just need everyone's patience, and we need everyone to have grace as we move through it. Navigating the social emotion experience, I think Sarah talked about it and Dawn talked about it. This work is really, really hard. This is not, there's not one person that this is easy on. And so we're working extremely hard because of the And so we're working extremely hard because of the stress level that everyone is feeling. It's the unknowns that are going on that we couldn't have predicted or we did predict, but we didn't provide enough support and able, in order for them to be taken care of. There's three issues that have been kind of a, that were not anticipated. And that was fear of the virus. We kind of assumed that people would be understanding about what has, why school can't happen. But there are still some people out there that the fear of virus is what's keeping them from coming to school or the fear of the virus is what's making them send some nasty messages because they really want their kids in school. The social justice issues that we're in right now is also adding to the stress of the environment. And then the politics going on right now is another issue that is challenging. And it's one that, again, the three things, the social, emotional issues of the virus, the social justice issues and the politics are things that we could, we predicted, but at what level we did not know. The other one is the communication and information. There is so much communication and information going out. You would think that we are over-communicating with the amount of stuff going out. But the reality is, is so much is going out that, you know, the unanticipated thing is that people are drowning in and they're overwhelmed by the communication. And so one of the things we're working on as a system is to try to kind of circumvent that and make sure that when we're pushing things out, that we're pushing them out in a logical way so that everyone has understanding. One of the things I just wanted to, and again, I can list like a whole slew of challenges that are up there. But one of the things we all know that whenever something is new, there are going to be challenges and we need to work through them and we need to listen to our people. We need to anticipate and we need to help find, close down some of those barriers or find some other solutions for them. So we'll continue to do that as we work with our principals. But one of the best things I heard when I was at a school the other day is one teacher said, when the day comes that I'm actually able to welcome my students into my classroom, it will be the best teaching day of my life. And I feel like all of us feel that way, that will be the best day of our lives as a system, too.
Thank you Kathleen, you know, it's, I get the great, I get the great joy of talking about all the successes, you know.
Yeah, thanks.
There have been a lot of challenges and we've talked about the challenges and barriers. But I think it's also important to know that with challenges have come a lot of successes as well. And I think at the end, the biggest success of all is the fact that children have come back to school. And I know that when I was in a building, I spent all summer and then the kids would come back. And I always say to myself, thank goodness, my friends have come back to play, it's just outstanding. And I think that when we think about the successes of kids showing up at the rates that Brian talked about and, and we want to be very watchful of that and mindful of that. And we're reaching out and doing more to ensure that more kids are engaging and coming to school. And I'll talk about more of that in a minute. But I think teachers and principals are reminded every day just of the joy that kids bring to school. The joy they bring to their teacher, the joy they have in connecting with their peers, their eagerness to learn. And we, while there are barriers, we have to also remind ourselves that kids are showing up and they're learning and teachers are working tremendously hard. But kids are there and they love being with their classroom teachers. There has been a success this year is the tremendous amount of professional development that's being offered to teachers, opportunities to learn, support with curriculum. And teachers are connecting with these opportunities. They are eager learners in that. And what we also know to be true is that we have tremendous teachers who are doing tremendous things every day for our kids. And they have been appreciative of the amount of time and effort has been there to offer the PD and support that they've gotten. As we've mentioned, schools, a success is the amount of time in principals and teachers have spent reaching out to schools and families, whether that's through home visits, back-to-school events, limited in-person, meet your teachers, Zoom meetings, one-on-one connections with families. The library pickup and drop-offs has been a tremendous success. One of the schools, the, they, the LMA and classroom teachers put together book bags of books in genres and kids drove up and said, they were asked, so what kind of books do you like to read? And the kid told them and they were given a bag of books and off they went. So things like that are just really fun to hear and it's important that we remember those successes are out there. I think a big success that we have had as long as well as a challenge is what we continue to do is to really focus on our anti-bias, anti-racist work. Schools have jumped in, they're deeply engaging in it. They are doing very thoughtful work, they're thinking about inclusivity, they're thinking about children being connected and feeling valued and having a voice in their classrooms. Every school has taken this on and what we've heard from teachers and principals is that idea that, thank goodness, we're now really zeroing in on this, we're getting into it, we're really digging in. And there's that sense of, of, I don't know what the right word is, relief, excitement, eagerness to get going and continue with that work. So that has been a, a good success for us. As Danielle talked about, these behavior, health and wellness teams and the connections we've been making to kids and families have been fabulous. And it really shows that notion that a team approach can really make a difference. The feedback we've been getting from teachers and principals is, it has been hard. But we've also been hearing a lot about how wonderful it is to be in rooms. Principals talking about appreciating the time they have at staff, with staff, the time they have with staff to think about and plan and work together around how to best meet the needs of every kid in their community and every family. And that, I go back to that part that says, as Kathleen talked about, people are missing those in-person connections, absolutely. But they're also coming at the work with possibility, intention and thoughtfulness. And, and just as we would expect our teachers and our principals to do. And so those, those would be some successes that I think it's important to remember in the midst of all the other stuff that we're worrying and thinking about. And I will pass it on to Ken, who's going to talk about middle school.
Evening, Ken Struckmeyer, Executive for Middle Schools, Dr. John Franco and I, the high school exec, will be leading you through some information about secondary schools. We want to start out with expressing extreme gratitude to secondary teachers. We know how committed our secondary teachers are. We appreciate their hard work and we really appreciate that they are approaching the work we're doing with a growth mindset. At the secondary level, we've been focused on building relationships with our students, emphasizing health and wellness and really engaging students in meaningful and challenging learning. I'm going to highlight three areas of our work at the middle school level. Patrick did a great job explaining how the start of the year routines are very different and doing drive-up distribution is part of our experience as well. I would mention doing your school portraits in a covered play area outside is not something I ever thought I would experience. But that's the reality of the logistics that our secondary and elementary principals have had to plan for this year. I want to highlight that normally this time of year, we would be having a back-to-school night, a night when the community would come together on campus. It's an opportunity for parents to meet teachers. We've had to rethink that and I just want to emphasize that schools are doing those sort of activities, but it's not going to be a single night. Instead, we're having weeks of welcome and multiple opportunities in ways that are meaningful to families. And so those events are an important part of building our relationship with kids and their families. I also want to highlight our commitment to advisory. Advisory is a vehicle for us to build authentic relationships, a small community, where we're not just learning academics, but we're learning about ourselves and we're learning about our behavior and we're learning to be powerful learners. Those are our goals for our kids. We have been very appreciative of the partnership of the Behavior, Health and Wellness Team. Danielle talked to you about some of the interventions. But proactively, we are engaging every middle school kid in helping them to have skills to be resilient and to understand their agency. And I want to thank Amy Baker, Chris Damiano, Eli Green and Leslie Rogers for their partnership with middle school principals in that work. And I also want to bring your attention to academic conferences that will be coming up. An academic conference is a time when a group of principals, a small group of principals, come together with Superintendent Grodding, with Deputy Superintendent Hansman, with executive administrators to walk them through the priorities and the shared work of the adults working on their school campus. We're going to be kicking those off in a couple of weeks. Principals have done incredible work in conjunction with their school teams. This will help to illuminate their work and help them keep focused if we, as we move on. We're going to go ahead and move to the next slide and Dr. Frank is going to walk us through some of the work at high school.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you, Ken, for that amazing introduction. And it's great to see all of you, School Board, and, and thank you for allowing us this opportunity to talk to you a little bit about what is working and some challenges since we, in this new normal, so to speak. Just to give you, just, just quickly, we do have a few more slides after this. And what Ken and I did is when we were talking, we did find that we had common themes at the secondary level. So when you're thinking about successes and challenges, we really lumped in together. And so we had our individual updates per level. But when we do talk about successes and challenges, we were, we thought it would be better just to go together. So just a few quick things from the high school perspective. But first, I do want to acknowledge, just like what everybody else did, is that people are working extremely hard. And all that being said, I'd have to say that the first few weeks of school, because there was so much front-loading, because there was so much work and preparation going into it, that the feedback from buildings, from building leaders, from administrators was relatively positive. And I say relatively positive because I'm comparing it to, in general, how we generally started school before. But if you think about just in the grand scheme of things of CDL, I think it went as well as an opening could go in this environment. And that is because of the hard work of our staff. And you could see that with some of the numbers in regards to student attendance at the high school level. About ninety-five percent, I believe, was the attendance rate. A second piece is the anti-racist work. That was a consistent focus across buildings during pre-service week and will be a focus all year, that is a common theme. Superintendent Grodding did mention a message that will be going out. We are very excited about this message, about the stance that we are going to take as a district. Because we are, and we believe that this is not just a part of the work, but it is the work moving forward. And then the school learning plans will encompass anti-bias, anti-racist goals and strategies and also graduation goals at the high school level. And then just to go back, I think this is some pertinent data that I think all of you would like to know, that the class of 2020, when you're talking about seniors who are actually in our system, that ninety-four point nine four, ninety-four percent of them did graduate in the class of 2020. Obviously, that's very exciting. My daughter was one of them. And so that does speak to not only our kids, but our leaders and our teachers and our classified staff. So I thought you'd like to, to hear that, that data piece. So David, could you move on to the next slide?
All right, so I'm going to take the first two challenges and then John's going to help me with the other two. These challenges are ones, as the elementary execs were saying, we may or may not have predicted them. But what's important is that we are listening to our teachers, we're listening to our building leaders and we're working hard to support their success. We had a few rare incidences this fall where students shared information about how to go to a Zoom room with students that weren't enrolled in the classes. And some of those students were disruptive or disrespectful. It did have an impact on learners, we took that seriously. We addressed behavior, but more importantly, we helped to build our capacity of teachers, how to navigate creating Zoom room with protocols that kept them and kids safe and did some things to monitor the implementation of that to ensure that teachers could focus on working with kids and not focus on policing the doorway into their classrooms frequently. Attendance-taking is another area where we had an opportunity for growth. Attendance-taking in a normal classroom at the start of the year is slow because you have to learn who your kids are. It's more challenging in a Zoom room where kids may or may not have their camera on or they may or may not be using their district account to access us and it may not be possible to know their names. In addition, the state allows for students to engage in learning after class and we need to make sure that we are accounting for that. We have some expectations around teachers doing some of that work, but some of our guidance might have been cumbersome at first. So we've been really engaging in conversation, learning more about the teacher experience and making sure that we can account for our kids engaging and learning, but have realistic expectations for our teachers.
Yeah, thank you, Ken. And just to highlight maybe a few more, and mind you, just like what Patrick Meg said, is that these aren't the only challenges. But when you're thinking about just overall challenges, these are things that definitely have come up to the forefront. The Zoom and attendance, just like what Ken mentioned. The elementary folks did also mention the smoke and the weather. Twenty twenty, as we know, has just been a really difficult year and it just felt, just kept piling on. But the smoke and the weather did impact, we had to either, and I, I didn't even say cancel, but we had to postpone because we needed to welcome our kids back. We needed to get out pertinent materials to them. And so if anything, it just pushed back some of the initial activities, the drive-ups that we had been planning. But we did get them all done. And I see Ann has, you know, her Westview background, Westview. You know, they had a Saturday freshman welcome that, that they did just this past weekend. So those types of things are happening, just pushed back a little bit due to the smoke and to the weather. And substitute teaching, we're still trying to figure out, not necessarily, well, yes, I mean, what it looks like in substitute teaching, but what it looks like to be a sub during that time. But more so, how do we go about setting up subs? You know, if, if you think back to a regular brick and mortar setting, what generally would happen is that the teacher would put in for a sub and that the, we'd have somebody in the main office that would help facilitate that in terms of lesson plans and those particular types of things. Well, Zoom has presented some, some challenges because you can set up Zoom to have an alternate host, but that alternate host can't set up other people to be alternate hosts. And so we're, we're still trying to work through that. And I have to say that our schools have got, have gotten together and figured out a way where we can do that, where subs can set up Zoom links. Therefore, if we have a teacher who has to go out on emergency, as we know, two and o'clock, two o'clock in the morning and they're sick, there are ways that we can work through some of those things. So, so that was an initial challenge and we'll continue to, to work through that. David, next slide.
All right, so our pre-service week this year, we had two weeks to support teachers and their success. I want to extend my thanks to Caleb Bell, to John Poplinsky, to Brian Sika for their leadership in coordinating TOSSAs in supporting buildings and having really, really thoughtful professional development. It supported our teachers in comprehensive distance learning and it supported them in, in taking this moment and being effective as anti-racist educators in our district. The area of anti-racist leadership is something that John Franco and I have been very committed to building the capacity in our building leaders, including our avid coordinators over the last two years. But what was really great to see this, this fall is that rather than those being local efforts, it was a systemic Beaverton effort. And so we, we've heard lots of good feedback from teachers about the quality of professional development provided by TOSSAs in teaching and learning. Extending beyond that, the common focus among secondary principals is really noticeable. They are on the same page, they are sharing best practices, they are pushing one another. And we have a very cohesive leadership group and just a lot of, a lot of thanks to them for their, their work. And again, our attendance this year is quite good. We had some kids that we couldn't engage because they didn't have devices the first week. But since then, the support of our building-based Behavior, Health and Wellness Teams is helping us to see really strong trends in attendance and we feel good about that.
Yeah, thank you, Ken. And, and as you can see here, we, we did talk a little bit or just put down back-to-school activities, prioritizing relationships. And really, it's really about student and family connections. You know, one of the things, we, we have to take everything that we do that happens this year and learn from it. And it'd be a shame if we didn't. And one of the And it'd be a shame if we didn't. And one of the things is the back-to-school piece about how often, so it really is about student-family connections. And so one of the things that high schools or secondary schools are exploring is, you know, it shouldn't just be one, one night or one activity at the beginning of the year. But especially now, we need to incorporate more frequent student-family engagement, engagement activities. And given now we are in a CDL environment, it doesn't have to be in the evening. We could do some things during the day. We can do more things asynchronously. And so that has been an opportunity that we are hoping to capitalize on. I've mentioned this before, but the feedback from principals for the, for these first two weeks has been positive. And so that's a great thing. And and I think that all of you do know that, that principals, especially at the secondary level, high school level in particular, number one, be bashful about providing very explicit feedback. But I have to say, when there's, when they're telling me that it has been positive, then it has been. And, and I like to equate that to, it's been a good feeling that they're hearing from their students and from their community. So during CDL, or this year, we, we have incorporated the Wednesday PD days and collaboration days. Given that we know the immense work that, that teachers have to do, or that all staff have to do to not only be teaching, but to do it in this remote world. And on top of that, talking about our Abar work, we need time. We need time to dialogue about these things as a group, and I'm, and I'm very, or we are very happy that we have these Wednesdays for these professional development, learning opportunities, and for collaboration. And again, being an educator for a long time, being married to one, being around them, the time that teachers have with their colleagues just to talk about things is, is how we get through this. And it's how that efficacy gets built, that we are in this together. And so we are very happy that we have that time together. So that, in a, in a sense, is the end of our updates and our successes and challenges. We wanted to end with the successes to leave you on a good note before we get to Q and A, but from a secondary level, that's all we have for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was very comprehensive and a lot of information in a short amount of time, and you can see how hard everybody's working. And thank you so much for all that information. So, board members, any questions for anybody? So Ann, I see you popped right up. Want to go ahead?
The graduation number that you presented, John, was the first time that I had, think I had seen that. And I'm wondering, frankly, I was pleasantly surprised to see what I think is the highest graduation number ever for Beaverton School District. And I'm wondering what we can learn from that experience that at the same time where, you know, I think the perception was that we were losing kids left and right, that we were actually having our most successful year ever, getting kids graduated and ready for their next steps.
So thanks, Ann, for that question. A little caveat in terms of the numbers, the OD hasn't yet officially given us the grad rate because
Sure.
Right, right. I mean, I mean, so it's, it's, it is, right? It's like
No, I know.
We have our
It's gonna get better, right?
Right, right. That's what I, that's what I'm thinking. But I would say this, like, we've never had, like, if you think about, like, if we were to pull this same, pull the same report from last year in terms of seniors within our system, I agree with you. It is the highest it has been. And you don't have to say that, you know, in large part, there, you know, there were some pieces there with March, and then also with the pass and the incomplete. But I'm not gonna take, to me, that's not the reason. To me, the reason is there was a distinct focus on calling and connecting with seniors, or students and students, but then with seniors especially. And then formulating grad plans has been really big. And then, and then utilizing the resources, including summer school, up through August 31st, which was the deadline to get kids up to this point. And I've, and I've said this, and I've always said this, and believe this, is that in order to get kids to graduate, especially you're talking about the last 10 to 15%, it is about sheer tenacity. And it is about working with families and continually connecting. And I, and I did say this before, but this CDL environment has presented opportunities and, you know, that we can learn from moving forward in terms of building a sustainable system. So we can continually have these numbers moving forward.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's so exciting to see that, you know, through these challenges, we are able to, you know, put some new things into practice perhaps, or just, you know, recognize, pat ourselves on the back for when things really work and, and help kids get to where we know they want to be. You know, every kid wants to graduate. How do we get them there? All right. Thanks for sharing the news.
Yep.
Tom, you're next.
Thanks. I appreciate the report as well, how comprehensive it's been. I have a question to be able to kind of contextualize some of the information I'm receiving. So when we're looking at attendance data with our students, are we looking in terms of a percentage of the total number of students who could be going to school right now? Or is that a number that is contextualized against like our pre-COVID numbers before? And I'm trying to understand because it's, they both could mean something different for the number of students that are how big our success is, basically, or how much we, further we have to go. Because obviously, they're part of that number, a group of students that we still need to reach, and that's incredibly important as well.
Ryan, do you want to take that one?
Yeah. Hey, Tom, great question. Thanks for asking that. So it is a percentage of students that are active in our, you know, in synergy, so in our center information system. So it's students that are active. So to do that, they would have had to enroll, been enrolled in our system. So that goes to one of the numbers Dawn talked about, how a number of our kindergarteners have not come on board. They're not into our system yet. So obviously, that and not only do we have, you know, upwards of 5% of our students not regularly attending, or not attending at all, or at least not significantly attending, we also have the students who have not yet enrolled. So the percentage size of students who are active in our, who are active in the system, what's their, essentially, their daily attendance rate?
So we could back out the roughly 1,300 students that we've lost? And then what we're left with, we're looking at a percentage of that?
Yeah, that, that's exactly right.
Okay. And of those 1,300 students we've, we've lost, do you think some of them would enroll? You know, like, there's an intentional enrollment, and then there's a barrier to enrollment, right? And of those 1,300 students, are we seeing that there's a barrier to enrollment? Or are we seeing that there's an intention not to enroll?
I, I think we're seeing quite a number of different scenarios, and actually, everything you described, we could give you an example of from families who are just not yet sure how it's going to work, and there are so many barriers that until we remove some of these barriers, it really makes no sense to enroll for, for the family. And our behavior, health and wellness teams, our counselors, our administrators are still working with them. Switch that, maybe another, another example, another side example would be there are families who are just predicting that this would not be the environment for their students to learn, and they're choosing either homeschool or alternate forms of education, perhaps even making a family decision to delay kindergarten. But again, still continuing to reach out to those families and offering them what we can.
Okay. And that brings me to my last question, which is, you know, I've seen a number of interventions that Danielle, you put up there with your slides. What are we doing for those students where those interventions aren't working? You know, what's kind of the next step? What's the next frontier to make sure that we're reaching those kids that we're not reaching right now?
So, I mean, the biggest thing right now is we're is relying on kind of our home visits. So, you know, if you can reach out to the fam, or the family via email and Zoom and all of that, if you're still not getting there, then it's going to the home. So we're exploring, some schools have done things where they have gotten a BEF grant, or they have gotten funding from local churches, and they've gone and brought, like, gift certificates to kind of get them in the door, like, hey, I'm bringing you something. Can I talk to you about what's preventing your child from coming to school? So, I mean, ultimately, the biggest thing we can do is really just making that human contact. And that's really kind of their frontline of defense. And then having someone identified as the, kind of the plan manager for that student. So they're the go-to person to be doing the follow-up phone calls, the connections. And, you know, that team tries to identify who's that person that that kid has a relationship with that will, you know, kind of get, you know, people respond differently. So we're just trying to find those people.
Are you finding a lot of success with the home visits? Are they helping to connect the kids back to school, or is it too soon to know?
Well, I mean, we did over, we did almost 300 home visits. And if you look about, out of all the interventions we've tried, you know, 43% of the students who we engaged with, like, they re-engaged after that, kind of those interventions, and they didn't need follow-up. So we have about another 43% of students who are, they're requiring, you know, a lot of prompting, like the follow-up, the, those pieces. And then we have, you know, about 14% where we're just still continuing to struggle to engage with them. And in most cases, these were students we struggled to engage with in terms of being onsite. And so now, when we're this far removed, it's even more of a struggle. So those teams are really trying to say, like, what can we do? How do we connect with you? What, what is preventing you from getting there? And then trying to find the hook, right, for that kid or that family to try to help them out.
Thank you for all the hard work. It's very much appreciated.
Okay, next up was Susan.
You skipped me. Oh.
Oh, Eric, I'm sorry. No, Eric, you were in line. I'm sorry, Susan. Eric was in line, and he's been waiting so patiently.
Hey, thanks, thanks for the great report, Teaching and Learning. It was really informative. So it's really impressive about the, you know, the amount of people that log on and engage initially, but what kind of like diagnostics, or what can you tell about the engagement level once they're online? Because I know a lot of people, maybe their parents are there, and they can help them log on and start, but are they really engaged? Can you tell via seesaw? I'm not sure what kind of special packaging you can tell about the level of their attention to the curriculum being dispensed to them.
Yeah, Eric, I'll, I'll take a shot at that one. I'll tell you our absolute best level of knowledge on how well a student is progressing towards our learning targets, right? That's, that's what our teachers are experts in. Really, if we want to know how well our students are actually progressing through distance learning or any learning, it's when we're able to see the feedback and the assessments and, and ultimately, the report cards and grades, right? Ultimately, is going to be a kind of report format to them. I'll, I'll just share one piece of information we learned on the very first day of distance learning. For the Millan High School students, there was like 3.5 million clicks through Canvas. To be honest with you, Eric, I have no clue if that's good or bad. I honestly, I don't know. And so we have more diagnostics than you, than, than we can really do on reports and that. But ultimately, that's what our teachers are experts at. They're experts in teaching students, they're experts in assessing students, they're experts in giving feedback. So ultimately, through conferencing with families, through report cards, and through that will be our true. And then ultimately, like Ann said, and in however many years you are from graduation, ultimately, graduation will be, you know, our, our kind of first big measure of success. So we're, we're happy to report to the board any seesaw and canvas metrics that you like. And, but I would encourage you really to focus on the assessment pieces that the teachers are giving as well.
Thanks for the response. Thank you.
One, one piece of success, sorry, I forgot to mention, just real quick, Canvas. Everybody's on Canvas. That is a big success, and is a huge success. Sorry.
All right, Susan. Well, first of all, thank you to your entire team. I am extremely impressed. Thank you to the principals and to the teachers. I'm really impressed with our school district, and I'm impressed with our students, and I'm impressed with our families. But of course, I'm concerned about students that, you know, might continue to have a gap because of missing so much school, you know, the three months, March through, you know, May or June, whenever it ended. And then going on to the summer, having the gap, and then starting school, and how, how that is affecting teaching. But I do have a couple of questions. One is about, I know that kindergarten numbers are very low. I was wondering if pre-K, if we have less students in pre-K right now? Does anybody know that answer?
I don't think that we have anyone here to answer that right now. Yep. But I know that, as you've heard, our kindergarten numbers are down, so.
Right. That part I knew. I was just wondering if that was reflective in the pre-K, and, you know, if our numbers were down there. I do, I mean, and I'm also concerned about those students that are homeless or houseless right now, and how we're able to reach out to those students and to those families. So I don't know if there's an answer for that. I know you have a team. But how are we able to connect to them?
I, I can talk a little bit to that, Susan, because I work directly with the Help Center. And so the, we have three liaisons in the office at the moment. And we are actually in the process due to some, we had a social worker. But with the hiring of social workers, we were able to, our social worker moved to a school base. And so we're able to use that position to be able to hire two more liaison positions. So we will be doing that. And they, part of that is they're partnering with the social workers at Middle and High School to both be resource brokers, but also more people to go out to homes and out to be and connect with the families that way. They know the community really well. They know their community partners really well. And so they're working to both identify who the kids are, working with counselors, social workers, both on the eligibility part of McKinney-Vento, while simultaneously working with our community partners to say, what are the resources that are out there, and how do we keep doing it? And as we know, the, the resources in the community are, are being stretched as well. And so that team does a lot of work with, with partnership development as well. So it's kind of a two-pronged approach at the Help Center, and they've got a, an enormous caseload, and they, they work tremendously hard. But the, with bringing on so many new social workers and the behavior, well, health and wellness teams, we, Danielle and I have been working with that group to, to link up the work with this Help Center more to schools and more to those teams. So that's actually helping identify and getting the need, services out there that we need.
And Susan.
Oh, good. We just both got the answer to the pre-K question.
We emailed them, Caleb. So in all the schools that have the pre-K, the numbers are steady, except in one school, the numbers are down. But we are still recruiting and still waiting for people to fill out the paperwork. So preschool's going strong.
I'm glad to hear that. So I have some anecdotal information because I think it's important to hear the positive news. One, I was walking in my neighborhood, I think it was last week, and I'm talking to my friend and happened to see someone in the school district, and someone rolls down their window, and I hope Pep is here, to, and, and just was so excited, said, Susan, I'm so excited because both my kids are doing Flex Online, and it is perfect for them. So, I mean, so I just wanted to share that piece. You know, I've also had some neighbors say that, you know, and surprisingly, some parents who were really concerned about their kids going into sixth grade, and you know what? They're going online, and they're doing their work. And, you know, when I hear about other school districts, it, it makes me exceptionally proud of what we're doing in our district. And I also wanted to say that neighbors stopped me about our distribution of, you know, Chromebooks and iPads, and how smooth and just how so many, how we had that going prior to the pandemic, and just something, again, to be really proud of. So I just want to thank you all for, I know it's not easy. I am totally concerned about those kids that are at risk, as is everybody. Concerned about the gap that we have in education. But, I mean, I do think that, you know, for the resources that we have, we started out pretty well. So thank you.
Thanks, Susan.
Hey. So Donna, you have some questions?
Yeah, so I wanted to, of course, echo my school board members and thanking you all for all your hard work. I mean, this is heavy lifting, uncharted territory, et cetera, et cetera. I guess my questions center mostly on support, since I think everybody else has covered a lot of the other questions I had. But, so But um, so I know that in doing this anti-racist leadership work, you're going to have to call people out, excuse me, you're also going to have to coach them. So what sort of supports are you giving the leaders? Because often there is backlash associated with it. And maybe the teaching staff may not be appreciative of the direction. Some of them, I'm not saying all of them are, but some of them. So how are you, um, I'm not sure you want to call it inoculating them or insulating the leaders? So they're not being unfairly criticized and therefore that impacts their ability to be a successful principal for as far as their evaluation goes, because they get complaints. And maybe some really uh, uh, harsh complaints from folks, mostly because they're not appreciative of the comments or coaching they're getting regarding anti-racism work. That's my first.
I'm gonna look to the execs to see which one. I think any of them can answer that question, but I'm thinking somebody may want to take it on. Anybody want to volunteer? Patrick?
Sure. I'll give it the first stab. Um, you know, Dawn, I really appreciate that question and your, your um, the, the care that's coming through that for principals, because they, they are engaging in some very challenging and difficult conversations. And um, I think that the support that Dawn's messaging to the community is a place that allows principals to hang their hats on that. So that gives one level. The other thing is that as, as execs, we are coming alongside them and saying, we're here to support you, we're here to help you. And we know that there's going to be times when people aren't going to like the decisions you make or that uh a misstep is made or what, but we're here to learn together and be together. And that's our constant message while simultaneously helping and support their leadership through our one-on-ones, our, our whole group meetings. Um, and Pat McCurry has also been a really big support for them. They reach out to him. The scope and sequence he put, has put together, uh, they have used to help guide what they're doing in the building. So we're trying to wrap around them while simultaneously knowing that a lot of that hard work they're going to need to do, but knowing that we're here behind them uh to help support to the best they can. And if a plate, can complaint comes through and, and some have, we, we just handle it and we go through it and we, we do what we can to help the, the school, the, the teacher and the family feel like their voices are being heard so we can move forward.
Donna, this is Dawn, if I can interject a little bit. Um, we, I, I want to give a shout out to our um B Mac and B Mac folks um also. Um, we've been in conversation with them and um they've uh given us some guidance and suggestions. And uh, we've taken a lot of those suggestions. Also, they have been very good at uh willing to stand alongside of our administrators, whether it's in a building, a department and whatnot. And so um, starting to form those partnerships, I think has been in, important. And uh, they've just been great. They've been solution-based and they want to be uh part of, part of this work. And uh, they've also corrected us when we've maybe been heading down a road that we thought was correct and said, hey, did you think about this? Have you thought about this? And then also um, Pat has been engaging people outside of our district uh who have worked with this type of work and have done the work and have been successful. So uh, but I, I really, really just wanted to give a shout out to all of our um BIPOC staff who, who have come alongside us and, and given us suggestions.
Donna, I'm gonna um add some. Um, one of the things that was a surprise to me, it shouldn't have been a surprise to me, but it was a surprise to me, is the first week we had our one-on-ones with the principals. I was amazed, flabbergasted and so impressed with the amount of work they have done in their schools with their staff. What it showed me is that they all believe in this work too. And so they're not afraid of the conversations and they've been waiting for this to happen. So it has been just thrilling to see the amount of time and effort that has been put into this. Um, you would be very happy about that.
Well, that's great. I'm glad to hear that. Okay, so my next question is um having to do again with supports for teachers and staff. We are living in uncharted territory, COVID and we've got racial injustice issues and of course, the election. So the deal is, what sort of supports are we providing to staff overall? I mean, everybody has different uh levels of, of stress that impacts them. Um, and I know that um they, I know that um a lot of companies are offering, you know, counseling for, for people. Some companies have um employee resource groups that, you know, folks can get, get together where they can have a forum to talk about things. I'm sure the school district has something, or are we just relying upon our, our, uh, the normal learning teams that we have in the schools to do it uh together to sort of uh help teachers navigate through the emotional minefield that they find themselves going through? But what are, what are we doing as a school district? Or are we just relying it on the building level to take care of those social emotional needs that our teachers are faced with, sort of alluding, sort of piggybacking on what Sarah said earlier?
So our um Behavioral Health and Wellness District Team has been working with admin, principals on ways that they can run professional development or do activities with staff that are trauma-informed, that focus on wellness. We have also been through our staff talk and, and um working with uh community involvement. We have been pushing out wellness um kind of resources to staff. And interestingly, today I was in a meeting and one of the staff members I was meeting with was talking about how they're doing. They read the staff talk and they're doing the wellness exercises. Additionally, in the district, all our um staff have access to our Employee Assistance Program, EAP. So they can have up to uh ten counseling sessions um through Cascade Centers. And so we've made sure that people have access to that. And then we've been discussing, so through our health insurance, um, our health insurance plans have options for massage and acupuncture and chiropractic work. So we've been really trying to plug all of those things. So our building principals are focusing on wellness with their staff. We have um employee assistant programs for staff. We're pushing out ideas throughout our staff talk and really just trying to just check in, I think, with um our teachers. I think Sarah talked about that at the beginning, that one of the things she got from the BEA reps was just the amount of time principals and administrators are taking just to ask how people are doing and reaching out to them, whether it's be a text or a phone call or an email and really trying to um make sure we're doing that human connection piece.
Okay, well, here is my final que, question, which is totally different direction than the other two. This has to do with after-school activities. Now, I believe that they have all been suspended, but I don't know that for a fact. So I guess I just was asking for some clarity. Have they all been suspended? Obviously because we can't do anything in person. Um, and then other question is, will it be triggered, will they be uh started again once we resume? And if so, what's that going to look like? Is it going to be all um, all in? Or is it going to be more baby steps? Because in some cases, fees are collected. And since we're not um resuming those act, activities, no fee will be collected. So I guess I'm just interested in what triggers those after-school activities whenever we do resume our normal or quasi-normal operations?
Donna, this is Dawn. I'll take a crack at it and I don't know if uh, you know, specifically when we say activities, I'm, 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 I'm assuming that you're putting athletics in that group and those type of activities. So right now, as a district or as, as myself has kind of taken the stance that we are not starting any of those activities until we can ensure that uh we can uh commit to some sort of small group instruction. So making sure that uh we're not bringing, we're not prioritizing athletics over instruction right now. And believe me, I'm an athletic guy and I know how important athletics are to, to our, our students. But right now, that's the stance we're taking. We're working with other districts. There are other districts who have allowed practice and conditioning to resume. Uh, we have not. Hillsborough is not. Portland Public is not. And I could give you a list of people who have, have, have done that at, at this time. And you're correct in that um, we're not collecting any fees right now. So right now, OSAA uh is specific to athletics, has uh put out a schedule that if we do and are able to come back and they're able to uh have contests, that we would consolidate our four seasons into um three seasons and they would be shortened seasons. Um, so we are working with athletic directors, athletic directors have been working with their coaches, finding out how we can bring um those students back safely. I know Josh Gomez and Carl Mead has worked extensively with them also on the operational side, on what safety standards and what requirements would have to be in place to bring these students back, whether it's in an outdoor and then definitely if it gets to where it's in an indoor. But to answer your question directly right now, we have suspended those activities and we're trying to, we'd like to have those activities resume if possible, if we can do it safely. But it has to be when we can also bring back some small group instruction.
I was also interested too, not just ath, athletics, but you know, there's other groups, for example, like the debate team. There's also robotics. There's a lot of other groups out there that, that gather together um for, for other reasons outside of sports. So I'm just curious, overall, my question was more of a general across the board and not specifically athletics. But um about those two, about those uh for, for example, I'm assuming the same thing applies, but I just wanted to hear it from the horse's mouth.
Yeah. So I think with speech and debate and um whether it's robotics or another type of activity, I think there was some miscommunications. We are allowing and encouraging if a principal comes or with a plan that that can be done in a safe manner, probably over Zoom. It's probably definitely not in person. But if that can be accomplished and our teachers and some of our, whether they're coaches and or um directors of some of those activities are very creative and they've been very creative. So we are saying, bring those proposals, send them up through your principal, uh, bring them to us. And if it looks like they can be conducted safely, and once again, I'll probably say it's probably not in person at the school, but it can be done safely in another, in another manner, we are allowing that. So I don't know, John, I know uh that you've been heavily involved or Carl or Josh, if you want to uh add anything uh to Donna's question.
Yeah, I could talk a little bit about it. Thanks, Dawn. Um, um, so actually, we're, we are coming forward uh to Cabinet to present our proposal on um some stipends and things along those nature. And then also I've been working with athletic directors, but also have gotten some uh information from our activities, people, activities, directors. Uh, speech and debate, I mean, those particular types of things. I think what we would want to know is, first of all, back to the original question, on campus, everything is suspended. But that does not preclude having things on a virtual setting. Uh, and what you're finding now is, is schools are doing that. I, I don't, I can't tell you the level to which an individual school is doing that. But I think that we all know uh, when you're talking about um after-school clubs or programs and connecting with kids, is that um if you look at coaches or activities directors or club advisors who have worked with students, um, you know, those connections are, are, are still in effect. Um, you know, whether or not there's pay to go with that or not. And so um, things are happening on a virtual level, um but nothing in person. And like I said, on Thursday, we'll present kind of a more detailed plan, because I have been in communication with some various groups in terms of what they will be doing. So we can have a more, how can I say, consistent approach moving forward.
Okay, Donna, you got?
Thank you. That's it. Those are my questions. Thank you so much.
All right, Leanne?
Um, my questions were, my question was answered, but I just wanted to say that um I am extremely pleasantly surprised by the numbers of involvement of students and how um I will look forward to seeing how we continue to be able to keep them engaged and showing up each and every day, especially after, you know, we get past the, maybe the first four weeks and the newness is worn off. I think all of them were bored stiff and ready to start something new and be back together. So it'll be interesting to uh continue to watch our incredible staff and administrators continue to engage them and keep them coming and learning and all of that. But great job, uh, great shout out to everybody, because I know it's been a really heavy lift.
All right. Well, thank you, team. That was, that was a lot of information, but it was stuff that obviously the board really wanted to know so that we can, uh, you know, when we get community questions and uh we know this is going to keep evolving and some, you know, what's true today may not be true tomorrow. And so that's why communication is so important and um, but um, um, we're just going to keep evolving and, and, and being solution-based. And uh, so just to really appreciate um all the information. And, and I'm sure you'll have more information for us at our work session, which is just a couple of weeks away. So um, we'll just keep um working on that. So uh, board members, um, we still have two other reports to go here. Um, we are um a little bit uh behind schedule because of all the important information we got. So if you could let me know in the chat, um, I, you know, I can go either way. But I'm happy as soon as we get the reports done, the next two reports, um, to take a, a small break or we can just keep pushing forward. So if you could just uh let me know after, if you want a break after we get done with the next two reports in the chat, that would, that would really be helpful for me. So next up, we have um our charter school reports. We always look forward to hearing from our charter schools. Um, and I'm not quite sure, um, it looks like Michelle, you're ready to go. So why don't you go ahead and uh get us started, introduce yourselves and, and uh we can go from there.
Thanks, Becky. I'm Michelle Heron. I'm the director at Arco E D. Hear you.
Can you hear? Oh.
There you go.
My computer. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I feel like between the phone and the computer, it's a constant, can you hear me now? Yep. Um, so if I fade out, let me know and I'll talk louder or wait till it comes back. Um, I'm here with my board president, Krista Billings, and you're happy to present our annual report. It's a little different than most years because we don't have any assessment data. So you've all had a chance to read it. Um, I thought Krista and I would just go through a few changes that have happened since the last time we spoke with you and then give you time to answer questions or ask questions. Um, I know you're all ready for a break because I can see the chat. So we'll try to talk fast and um make sure we get you the information that you need. So some of the things that changed last year, we um had a lot of discussion about the ideal configuration for our school in order to provide fiscal sustainability. And the board had made a very difficult decision to reduce our middle schools to one grade per class to keep our enrollment strong. Um, we typically see a fair amount of attrition between fifth and sixth grade, as I, I think most K eight schools do. And most of our demand is coming from students at the lower grades. So that was a pretty big shift that was difficult for our community, but I think very um important to, for our sustainability as a school. Another change is that we added a Spanish proficiency test for admissions in grades three through eight. And BSD was tremendously helpful in getting that up and running. Um, particularly Toshika Mauricio and her whole department were excellent resources for us and helped to get us the information we needed to implement that. Um, and then our big training focus last year was PSYOP, a, a protocol for helping with language acquisition. So we spent a fair amount of our professional development time and money on getting everybody to a common place in terms of strategies and language around that. Um, so kind of the highlights from last year, the low light obviously was COVID. Um, and then this year, some things that have been noteworthy. Um, one of them is kind of an accident. We got an extension on the expansion grant that we received from the state. And at the time, we didn't realize that that would be so important in helping us purchase the resources we need to provide distance learning. So that has really been a benefit for us to allow us to get. So, that has really been a benefit for us to allow us to get the devices and the technology and the digital subscriptions that we need to support families in distance learning. Like Beaverton, we are currently experiencing a dip in enrollment because many of our families are choosing other options, whether it's Flex Online or homeschooling. But we are confident that our enrollment will bounce back because our wait lists are still strong. So, we see this as a temporary, a temporary situation that many schools are experiencing. And then, like BSD, we're committed to continuing our work around anti-bias, anti-racism, equity training. Some things that we've worked on so far, starting last spring, were staff book studies. Currently, we're reading White Fragility together and discussing it. We created a parent teacher equity advisory council, and that's been a really great way to involve parents more directly in the conversation about how to create the school that they need for their kids. We have some internal expertise from teacher leaders, and they will be working with us over the course of the year. And then, recently, I got to attend a Beaverton principals meeting, and they shared the 20 Things checklist, which I thought was a great resource. So, we'll be working more with that as well. And then, Krista will give us some update on finances. But before I turn it over to her, I just wanted to do a very public thank you to John Bridges. He's our liaison, and he's been an amazing advocate and helper as we've gone through all the same twists and turns that you're going through and figuring out how to do school differently. And we really, really appreciate his support. So, I'm going to turn it over to Krista for an update on finances.
Thanks. We're in a, we're in a decent financial situation for this coming year, given a global pandemic. We were able to retain all of our staff headcount and actually add a few additional assistance through the SIA funds. This last year, we were also awarded a PPP loan for $427,000, and we're working with our bank now on the forgiveness of that loan. The PPP loan was a huge help as we were not able to hold our biggest annual auction fundraiser last year, and we expect fundraising efforts to be down this year as well. It's with the CARES, SIA, and PPP funds that we find ourselves in a position to be able to provide the best online learning program as possible for our students and meet our debt ratios for our bond. We will be submitting a revised budget next month to the district. We were holding off to see what enrollment did in September and what our actual expenses were. So, you will see that next month. And I, like Michelle, just want to thank BSD along with ODE. You guys have been a huge help with guidance for our schools and navigating all these changes in the. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for that update. Anybody, board members, questions?
I, I have a quick question. I know you didn't get to use it as long as you wanted to, but how's the new, how's the new building? How's the new building working out for you?
It's great. I, I wasn't with Arco in the old building, but I continually have people say, oh, my gosh, you should have seen the old building. So, I think just having a space that works, that's actually, even though it wasn't built to be a school, it totally functions as a school, it has light, it has space, has been a really important motivator for staff and students to give us stability and kind of a sense of place. So, even though we didn't get to spend a lot of time there, we're looking forward to going back. And we've actually used the type of way to make it really, really clean. So, when kids come back, it will look amazing.
Well, thank you both for joining us tonight and for waiting. And we'll look, we'll be following the, the financials. We know that that's, it's going to be a big ease for all of us. So, so, but thank you so much for joining us tonight and providing this, this, this great report. We appreciate it.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
So, I see Julie, you're already on, on board. You want to go ahead and introduce yourself and?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me clearly? Great, thank you. So, good evening to everybody. As always, we continue to be grateful for our partnership with Beaverton School District. And I don't think I need to state the obvious about the challenges from last year is spring and as we continue into this year because of the pandemic. But mainly, besides the concerns for our student learning, has been budget concerns also, as Michelle and Krista had talked about for Arco E Rees. We also lost a lot because our private programs, as well as our fundraising, like preschool, before care, after care, and enrichment, that brings in over a half a million dollars a year. And that was all, had to stop, you know, in March, and we have not been able to continue that, you know, for this year as well. Even our summer camps that we would normally have, we weren't able to hold those except for some virtual summer camps for continuing Chinese learning. So, a few things that we learned from the spring that we've tried to improve on for this fall in moving forward with CDL has been to like provide daily Chinese lessons instead of alternating days and with more synchronous learning time. The students have a more typical schedule of, with whole groups, small group lessons and following those CDL timeframes for teacher-directed applied learning and then rest for the students as well. I'm so impressed as I've been able to pop in on all my teachers to see their lessons and greet the students again. It's always nice to see them. But the way they are preparing those lessons and engaging students, it's, it's pretty remarkable considering the situation everyone is in. We're successfully using Google Classroom for our four to eight classes and Seesaw for the younger students. So, that's been a helpful to have consistent platforms for the parents, and we were using those in the spring as well. We were also able to provide Chromebooks now, starting this fall, for all of our students in fourth through eighth grade. That was a new development. And iPads and laptops on loan for all of our K to three students who needed them. So, in addition, we also put more into our Chinese support with TAs for kindergarten and first grade intervention, and then still offering free homework club for students to check into if they need support. Because it was the Chinese, of course, that's been the toughest on families, especially since most of our families do not speak Chinese at home. We also have the extra social emotional support through our counselor, and she's been able to connect with families who, you know, are in crisis or, or need more support and those students that need her. Our board has also been helping to lead the charge to do more work with diversity, equity, and inclusion, where we're promoting our anti-bias and anti-racism learning for our students and staff and families. We're holding CDL five days a week right now, but the teachers are already complaining that this is too much. It sounds like we're experiencing some similar feedback as to the rest of the district. So, as the metrics allow, you know, we're preparing to move to the hybrid plan when we can. The plan, you know, is to hold in-person classes for half the class cohorts on alternating days so that there's teacher contract, contact, not contract, contact, at least every other day. But all this uncertainty as to, you know, when we can possibly do that is really wearing. I see how much my teachers prepared, you know, just to set up classrooms and conduct class from home and then to think about switching back to the building and then possibly back home again if we were to shut down. It's, it's just a bit daunting. So, there are concerns, of course, for staff and student safety as well, but we miss seeing our students interacting with the families in person and really look forward to the day we can do that again. So, that's really kind of my summary about where we're at, and I hope you were able to read in our report kind of results from last year. I know we didn't have all the data either that we would have wanted to, but we'll continue to move on from where we are.
All right, thank you so much, Julie. Is there any questions? I'm all Chinese. You, you provided a very good report, very thorough. Thank you. And appreciate that you guys are, are pivoting and, and thriving as well as anyone can. And so, thank you so much for joining us tonight. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Becky.
All right, I can read body language pretty good, even on Zoom. And I think we'll take the break now. Let's try, let's really try to keep it to five minutes if we can, because we still have some, some work to do. So, if, 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 if somebody doesn't think five minutes is going to work, all right, well, ready, set, go.
Okay. Who do we have back? Eric's having problems getting back on. Can you guys hear me? Okay.
May have to make sure, Becky, that we have Shelley or David make sure.
I think David just did it, because I couldn't get my camera to start, because it said the hook. I think David just did it. So, so, we're just missing... Just, just, just Eric. I think he's going to try to call. So, why, Mike, why don't you go ahead and get us started on the finance, and Eric can, can join in?
Thank you, Chair Tim Chuck, members of the board, Superintendent Grodding. Appreciate the time tonight. Similar to the others, I'll take a little more time tonight than. take a little more time tonight than I normally would uh in discussing where we are with finances. Um, again, for the record, Mike Schofield, Associate Superintendent of Business Services. Uh, I would draw your attention to the year-to-date activity and forecast, which is something you see on a monthly basis. Uh, as part of your financial report. I want to walk through a little bit of what's going on in those numbers. Um, then I want to take you into some detail about what's essentially uh, happened in the district finance from a financial perspective since July. And then we'll come back and talk about the big picture again, um, and wrap up with a discussion about uh, the state revenue forecast which happened last week. So um, if, if, if you're looking at the year-to-date activity and forecast, you'll see our beginning fund balance and, and top section is revenues. The first uh column is the adopted budget. Next is the final budget. Those two numbers look the same at this point. The next column over is year-to-date actuals. Our current encumbrances is next. And then a total of the actuals and encumbrance and then a year-end forecast out to the far right. So as you look for comparisons, take a look at that final budget column and kind of compare that to the year-end forecast. So uh, again, in terms of beginning fund balance, you can see we uh, our final budget, which was pre-COVID, we estimate our beginning fund balance at thirty-two million. Uh, we are currently estimating our year-end forecast at fifty-six point four million dollars. So a significant increase. Again, a big thank you to our staff who participated in furloughs in the spring. To our building administrators who are very judicious with spending in the spring. Uh, all those factors help contribute to a better fund balance uh to start the year. If you look down a couple of more lines, state school fund, you'll see our budget was two-hundred-and-eighty-five-point-eight million. Uh, we currently have brought that down a little bit. Uh, you've heard some discussion about our enrollment drop. Uh, we brought that down to just around two-hundred-and-eighty-four million based on, remember, we get paid the higher of the school year that we're in, in terms of our extended ADMW or the immediate prior year, whichever is higher. So we are um, looking that uh, and believing that we will be funded this year based on our enrollment from last year. So we brought that number down a little bit. The next four or five lines, property taxes, common school fund, local option levy, uh, those are primarily property tax-based. We have not moved those numbers. Um, again, we went back and looked at two thousand and eight to see what uh, happened with property taxes when the great recession happened. Um, takes a while for property taxes to actually decline in a system like this. So at this point, we are not taking those numbers down. We've left them where they are. Uh, investment earnings below that, you'll see we brought that down significantly uh due to the interest rate environment that we're in. Um, so that number's down substantially. We've taken it down a million dollars. Funds from the uh, Northwest Ranger ESD, we've modified that a little bit, again, based on what we think we'll get this year. And then in the other section, that's gone from sixteen-one down to eleven-point-one. A big piece of that is um, uh, you know, just some of the uncertainty around what we're going to collect in terms of uh, fees from athletics activities. We had that discussion earlier. Uh, we, we brought those numbers down a little bit, but we'll watch them closely and monitor and adjust each month. Uh, so that's the revenue kind of big picture in terms of where we are. If you look down at the expenditure section, you will see uh, uh, salaries, benefits, uh, purchase services, supplies and material, all those are down um compared to where we were uh, estimating our budget compared to what we think our final forecast will be. And on and on down the line, and you see we hold our contingency at the same twenty-six-point-seven, but we think overall expenditures will spend about five-hundred-and-fifteen, five-hundred-and-sixteen million dollars. That gives us a surplus during the year of thirty-six-point-five million. Um, and so you see a projected ending fund balance currently, here we are in the month of September at sixty-three-point-two million dollars. That's about an eleven-point-four percent um, uh, as a percentage of actual uh, forecasted revenue. So not in a terrible shape, not in great shape. Uh, do you have questions about this summary page before I get it? What? If you just look at a snapshot in time, our fund balance right now is at that sixty-three-point-two. Um, I'm going to go into a little bit more detail on what's going on, especially on the expenditure side uh, and, and what we've done over the last few months. So questions for now, or should we start the presentation?
I guess I have a general question. I know that enrollment seems to be fluid. What happens? Uh, I guess, how much more of a decline can we absorb? And when we, when will we know we've got the final numbers?
So the decline um, in terms of impact to our funding uh, will be limited to uh, the higher of this year's enrollment or last year's enrollment. And we're already done, going to rely on last year's enrollment as our, as our uh, funding source. What will be tricky, I think, is looking at next year's budget and uh, trying to determine do we budget based on the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one enrollment numbers? What kind of bounce back will we see? What kind of enrollment increase will we see? Where is uh, where are we with COVID nineteen? Where are we with the vaccine? What do we? You know, what's kind of the, the state of the district and the state of the country and state of the world at that point, I guess I should say. Uh, in terms of our ability to uh, get kids back in school. So that's going to be a little trickier. That's primarily a next year question more than a this year question, but we'll keep our eye on it.
Mike, I got two questions. Uh, one of them is kind of a follow-up on that last one. Um, if we're going by, you know, the higher of the two, right, last year's enrollment or this year's, why would there be a reduction in the state school fund then?
So the, the overall reduction is uh, our from, it's from our budget and, and our budget that we had for this year, Tom, was just a little bit higher than last year. And the numbers that we believe we will finally get for enrollment for last year, remember that was an estimate, are coming in just a little bit lower.
I guess you're throwing up to last year's numbers. Okay, then the second one is you talked about the other, right? And what I would imagine if the explanation for the other were activities or athletics, then it would hit both sides of the ledger equally, but it's a much bigger hit to revenue than it is to the expenditures. And I'm wondering why, why that is.
So that is um, uh, you heard from Dr. Franco earlier tonight about some discussion about getting activities going. Um, coming up with some uh, activities that we can provide. Uh, and our ability, i- in the past, they've used some general student body funds to cover some of those costs.
Okay.
Um, so imagine, you know, the sticker you get on your ASB card that gets you into all the athletic events, you know, for free during the year or something like that. We don't have those this year, so we think we're going to have some costs involved.
Got it. Thank you.
You betcha. Okay, David, with that question, we'll move forward with the presentation. Okay, so I thought I would start with just some calendar information for you. So we start to get our um, kind of our head around what's coming. Uh, we had the revenue forecast last week. Uh, good news. I'll share some more information about that in a bit. Uh, at least good news compared to the prior forecast. Uh, PERS rates set for the next biennium. Uh, we've seen the preliminary rates. We went into the uh, board packet for the PERS board meeting that'll be happening on Friday. And you can see Beaverton's rate, and I have good news with a question mark only because they haven't actually adopted those rates yet. Um, but there will be a decline in PERS rates uh, for Beaverton School District for the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-three biennium. Um, so a bit of good news looking uh, into the next biennium. Uh, what governor's budget will happen on or about the first week of December? That's when we should expect to see the governor's budget. Uh, we'll see the co-chair's budget probably in late February would be a, a kind of typical routine time to see that. And then we'll see the first state school fund estimate for the next year in March, that first week of March two thousand and twenty-one. So just from a calendar perspective, um, those are the dates that are on my radar and some dates you might think about uh, moving forward, when some, when we'll get some more news in terms of funding and what's going on. Next slide, please. So these are budget updates and it's a laundry list, but I want you to see it because uh, I, I, I want you to know there's, there's been a ton of activity going on in terms of trying to uh, deal with cost containment measures, deal with um, all of the uh, new and different expenditures we've had. And just some of the idiosyncratic pieces of, of what's gone on with SIA as well. But uh, again, our beginning fund balance, about fifty-six million, that's included in the monthly financial you just looked at. We took central reductions. I don't know, it, it seems like forever ago, but back in July, we, we cut five-point-three million dollars uh, from the budget uh, just because of all the uncertainty and, and um, uh, the way the economy was trending at that point. Uh, we uh, had furlough not only in the last school year, but for those folks that were twelve-month employees, we experienced furlough into the month of July. Uh, that got us about another eight-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, and that's, that's accounted for in that monthly financial number you've seen. Uh, health rebate, uh, we've got a reduction of a million dollars there uh, that we've reduced. Um, we, we're going to watch that closely in terms of what we think we're going to get, but um, at this point, we're comfortable taking that number down in terms of our health costs by one million dollars. The next one, uh, flex online school. So that was essentially an online school that was set up, you know, it was, uh, I, I think it, it went from idea to fruition fairly quickly, but that was new cost and that was seven-point-seven million dollars. That's accounted for in the monthly financial you've seen uh, in terms of that new cost. We have a delay in the Apple lease uh, purchase. Uh, that is a net reduction of one-point-one million and it's reflected in the uh, monthly financial. So what you have in this case is you have a reduction in revenue because uh, when we leased these, we have proceeds from a lease and then we have expenditures to pay the debt service on the lease. So the net reduction is about one-point-one million dollars. Uh, Steve Langford would uh, remind you that he will be back asking for this next year. This is a one-year delay uh, on that Apple lease. So this is something you'll see again next year in the budget. We've just delayed it a year. Classified bargaining, we had a cost increase of about seven-hundred-and-sixty-thousand. That's included in our monthly financial. Remember, we wrapped up bargaining uh, pre-COVID with them or near the, excuse me, nearly pre-COVID with them. And there was an increase of about seven-hundred-and-sixty-thousand. And again, that's included in the monthly financial you just looked at. Next slide, please, David. Okay, so next issue, cost of living allowance. Uh, we had a cost of living allowance in our budget that is seven-point-six million dollars. Um, we, we have not allocated those dollars yet. I will remind you uh, as a board and, and that you know, we are still in bargaining and we will um, we will do good faith bargaining. So that number may change moving forward. That is not set in stone. Um, but I wanted to draw your attention to that. And again, more to come on that because we'll be bargaining. COVID supplies and PPE, four-hundred-and-ten-thousand, that's included in that monthly financial number. And then numbers below that, um, these are numbers that aren't reflected in the monthly financial that you've seen before because we're still getting arms around these numbers and we're not sure um, exactly what they are. We know, um, I, I wanted to present them to you tonight because the issues don't change. What those numbers might be might actually change uh, as we move forward. But we had staffing changes due to flex online. So uh, as you may or may not know, when we stood up flex online, um, they uh, enrolled students into flex online. Those students then left the brick and mortar school they were in, and so we made staffing adjustments uh, to the tune of five-point-three million approximately um, to accommodate uh, both uh, in helping stand up the flex online program as well as getting uh, back in line with what our staffing allocation methodology called for. So um, that was about five-point-three million dollars. Uh, additional furlough, uh, that's, that will be underway soon. We're estimating that to be an additional uh, cost savings of one-point-four million dollars. And then we have this staff reductions due to reduced enrollment. Uh, we, that's currently estimated at six-point-one million. Um, we are down significantly in our enrollment compared and, and which conversely, um, I, I hate using the word, but it essentially says we're, we're overstaffed to the tune of about six-point-one million at this point. So we are keeping an eye on that. We've done the elementary analysis. We still need to do the analysis for secondary and we will do that in the near future. Um, so stay tuned for that, but we, we um, feel like we've got some adjustments that need to be made as the superintendent mentioned at the top uh, during his comments. Um, because of this significant reduction in enrollment, uh, we will have uh, we will likely have staffing reductions moving forward. Student investment account, that is the, that, that one kind of goes the other way and we're, we're not saving any money. We budgeted and we are currently expecting to spend about sixteen million dollars. Our anticipated revenue is uh, about ten million dollars uh, in terms of what um, the uh, state has told us to anticipate receiving. So that creates a six-million-dollar shortfall uh, at this point. Um, you see in parentheses, I've noted Esser funds will provide some relief. So uh, part of our Esser dollars, uh, those are the dollars we received from the federal government in our application. Um, we noted that we would use some of those Esser dollars to help backfill some of that student investment account, but that's an area where we're a little upside down and underwater at this point. Questions about those? Um, you can see quite a bit of activity, um, not the usual July to uh, September activity in terms of what's going on financially, but we pulled a lot of levers and I thought it was important that I'd share with you uh, kind of what's been being done.
Mike, have you done any modeling around um, hybrid? So if we were to go back to a hybrid model, the additional costs that that could incur the district?
So we're, Tom, that's a great question. Um, we are doing some. Um, I don't think we are uh, we have our arms completely around what the, all the additional costs are. We've started to identify them. Um, we've start, we, we've been tagging um, you know, costs to date where we know, you know, the additional hand sanitizer, the additional cleaning equipment, some of those kinds of things that we know, and we've made some of those purchases. But I believe we have more to come and, and so that'll be a stay tuned item as we, as we go down that path.
Okay.
I just had just a, just a curious question. Professional protective equipment, what does that consist of? Is it just masks? What is it?
Masks, face shields and the like.
So then. What about the airflow? I know in the, the classrooms.
I will get way over.
Facilities could talk about that.
Yeah, Donna, I'll get way over my skis really fast. Uh, maybe Josh has some ideas about that.
I, I do. Uh, good evening, um, school board. So Donna, it's your question about air circulation. That's something that we're looking at with our maintenance team and developing that plan. Mike hasn't gotten that request yet because we're still looking into that. Um, so that's, that's to come. And to Tom, to your question about um, some of the other things that, that you were talking about, we're, we're still looking into that. So a hybrid um, return to a, a school in-person instruction would require signage. We're looking at uh, plexiglass barriers and floor marking so that we're working that. We've got some estimates for Mike that will, that will be coming.
And imagine there'd be some transportation costs in there as well because we would have to do stagger, start, stop, all kinds of complicated things that would be more difficult.
Yes.
Okay.
Tom, if I can, if I can add just something, that, that, that would be on the kind of the resource, the material side. The other thing, if we end up going into a hybrid, we've made the commitment to our families that we are giving them a choice with distance learning. And if we go back to a hybrid, um, our teachers are already under a, a, a lot of strain and workload is how do you, how do you teach in the classroom and then also accommodate those students outside of the classroom? Does that mean extra staffing? And I think that's where you really get into um, some significant dollars and uh, trying to figure out also who is going to uh, who's going to remain in school and who's going to continue on with the distance learning. So it's a uh, it, it's, it's a complex issue, but a good, good question, and we're thinking about it, but trying to land on what those dollar figures are is going to be tough.
Yeah, and don't confuse this question with uh, pushing or support for going into that hybrid model. I'm just trying to understand the costs.
Appreciate that. That's great. And, and as Superintendent Grodding mentioned, it's, it's complex in terms of how we meet all those commitments and um, deal with all the uncertainty moving forward.
So.
Susan, you had a question?
Yeah, I have a question about um, the staffing reductions. Um, and I know that there, we're kind of looking at thirteen-hundred students right at this point um, less this year. Um, when might we see something like that happen?
So Susan, we uh, just met uh, at Superintendent Grodding's request. We just met on Monday to have the initial discussion and look at some initial numbers. And like I mentioned, um, we've only looked at the elementary. We still have to look at the secondary. Um, it, this'll be a little while in the system for us to just kind of get our arms around it, uh, deal with the other things that uh, we, we've got coming at us in terms of, again, if we do go into hybrid, how do we provide CDL for those that still want it? Um, you know, that, there's a lot to digest here. I, I'd hate to speculate on a specific date, but know that we are, um, we've just had some initial meetings. We'll do some more, uh, as well as some more enrollment review, uh, in the next week. So that we'll, we're, I would say, Susan, we're just beginning to get our arms around that.
So I have a couple of questions, and one, my, I mean, you can just tell that I, you know, don't know what I'm talking about, but, um, on the Apple leases, um, is that wouldn't be something that would have been covered by our, our bond?
No, I think these are teacher machines. And again, Steve, you could probably weigh in on this, um, for us, but I believe these were teacher machines, and these are typically purchased through, uh, the general fund.
Okay. I was just trying to, you know, find, we could use, you know, some funds that were already set aside somewhere.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, Becky, this is Steve. Uh, you just want to confirm that we, uh, in two thousand and sixteen was our last Apple lease, um, and, um, they are general fund machines, and they are used for all certified staff to provide them a laptop.
So maybe whenever going forward, that could be something, if we are looking at IT equipment, that could be something that is rolled in like our student equipment?
That could be. We'll need to look at timing, I think, of the expiration of the existing fleet, which is entering its fifth year. Um, but certainly we will be, uh, having discussions, um, as we look to, uh, the next bond.
Because I just think our community thinks we, you know, we say we technology, and I don't think they think about the separation of, you know, what a teacher uses and what a student uses. So.
Yes, there are about three thousand laptops covered in the, uh, teacher leased laptop.
Okay, thank you. And, and then Mike had a question about meals. Um, I know that's something we get reimbursed, you know, somewhat reimbursed from the federal government. I know we're delivering meals in an entirely different way. Um, kind of like what we're seeing with, uh, revenue. Is that, is that something that's costing us more upfront? Is?
Yeah, uh, overall, Becky, we have, we have, uh, essentially through the spring and this summer, uh, the, the Nutrition Service Fund had built a pretty decent reserve, uh, in the, you know, couple million dollar range. And we've essentially, uh, eaten through most of that reserve, uh, getting through last year. There is some discussion and talk, uh, both at the state level and at the national level about, uh, uh, some recognition of that and the hardship that it's been on, on school districts. And some potential additional revenue there, but at this point, we don't have it. That's, that's a great point, uh, Becky. That should be on the list here, too. I can give you some updates on that in the future, but generally speaking, um, the nutrition services ended the nineteen twenty school year in the black, but not by much. They essentially took most of their reserves, uh, to get there.
Well, I would just like, this is, this is one of these issues that schools have the delivery system, we have the implementation, we are boots on the ground, we're the closest to knowing, you know, this issue. And if this is something the school board or the Oregon School Board Association can take up with our state legislature, with our federal, uh, legislators, this is, this is something near and dear to, you know, our heart, that we need to take care of our students that need to be fed. So if there's, if there's something that we need to, um, do on our part, let's put something together so that we can get out in front of this before we have students that aren't getting food.
Excellent. Thank you, Chair.
Mike, I got one more quick question for you. The investment earnings were down by about a million. Um, what's the explanation on that?
Uh, primarily just that we can't, we can't get any value in terms of rates anywhere. Um, it's, it's just really problematic, you know? That was one of the beautiful parts of, uh, refunding the bonds that we did, uh, back this summer. This is the other shoe, uh, that drops on that. Our ability to earn is just not out there. We, there, there's not much out there at all. We've got, we're maxed out in the local government investment pool right now because that's the best thing going.
Is that something you expect will be a trend line for coming years? Just something to expect?
It's, it, you and I, Tom, can play armchair economists a little bit here, but everything I hear and have seen from the Federal Reserve, they're saying rates are gonna be low for a long time, and they're happy with that. So given that, um, you know, if we don't get some natural inflation somewhere, they're gonna be low for a long time.
Thank you.
All right, any questions for Mike?
I got one, I got a couple more slides here, David, if you want to throw them up there. This is the look forward, big picture.
Okay.
So let's talk a little bit about the latest revenue forecast. This is the nice silver lining. Uh, the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-one deficit that was, uh, expressed back in the May forecast is essentially eliminated in the most recent forecast. And I'll show you a little bit about that in a minute. Uh, there's also improved revenue forecast for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-three, uh, biennium as well. I'll show you that it's still a, uh, it's still problematic compared to the, uh, March forecast that they had given, but, um, better than it was. And there will also be a larger beginning fund balance, again, because that deficit, uh, from nineteen twenty-one was essentially eliminated in the most recent forecast. Next slide, David. So this may be a little bit difficult to see, but let's, let's talk a little bit about this. These are lifted straight from the, uh, OEA present, uh, Oregon Office of Economic Analysis, uh, in their hearing last week. But, um, the light red line was the previous forecast. The darker red line is the current forecast, and then the other lines are previous recessions. So, uh, you can see that back in, um, May, the forecast was for an unemployment rate to hit around that twenty percent range, bounce up, and then improve, uh, about four years from now. In their most recent, um, forecast last week, you see the dark red line. We did not hit that twenty percent. We hit, uh, around fourteen. And the recovery now, it's similar in terms of what they had described as a square root. It bounces back up, but it still takes a while to recover. And now they're at a three-year recovery period. So essentially, uh, as you can see in the headline, the labor market is in bad shape, but not as bad as first year. So that was some good news in the, in the forecast last week. Next slide, David. This is the federal aid matters. I think this is, um, I, I won't speak for the state economists, but I think this was uh, part of the surprise, and it was part of the, an aha moment for me, uh, federal aid matters. So you'll see, uh, federal aid, uh, boost US personal income as a percentage change from January two thousand twenty. So personal income, uh, during this pandemic is actually, um, i- i- it's not where it was in, in, um, April, but it's continued to be above five percent. So the amount of federal stimulus that has gone out has been significant. Uh, CARES Act infused fourteen billion into the Oregon economy. And you'll see without those federal payments, whether it was the PPP program or the additional, um, the additional six hundred dollars a week of unemployment benefit, without those, you could see would be, we'd be significant, significantly below the zero line. Um, with those, we've stayed above. So personal income um, ha- has held up really well for now. Now, I would also say that in the forecast, uh, I believe the state economist is thinking there will be some more federal stimulus, um, that will be brought. Uh, we could probably debate that for hours, um, amongst ourselves in this meeting. Um, I would take a we'll see attitude on that. Um, but essentially, uh, those federal dollars mattered, and they really helped to keep the economy going. And if you're, uh, the, you can see this slideshow on, on the, uh, Office of Economic Analysis website. Um, there's more slides, uh, but really tax payments have held up well all the way through the spring and into the July collection period when it was extended to July. So, um, that was part of the good news that wasn't necessarily baked into the May forecast. Next slide, David. Bottom line, and I would draw your attention, less to the numbers on the left and more to the graph. If you look at the, um, red line, that was the March two thousand twenty forecast. That's the one that they're kind of basing, uh, what has changed, um, since that time. The dotted line is the June forecast, and the blue line is the September forecast. So you can see in nineteen twenty-one, the dotted line was below the, and you can see the red and blue are about the same. When I mentioned that deficit was eliminated, that, that's the graphic representation of that. Going out to twenty-one, twenty-three, you can see the dotted line projected a slower, uh, kind of revenue collection during the next biennium. The blue line's a little better. I would also note, though, it is not nearly as good as what the March forecast was. You see that little bit of a uh, disjointed, uh, in the twenty-one, twenty-three area, and then it starts to line back up, albeit lower out into twenty-three, twenty-five, and beyond. So, um, I, I, I think the key takeaway here is, you know, the nineteen twenty-one is significantly better. Twenty-one, twenty-three is improvement in terms of revenue and a beginning fund balance that, that the state will take forward. Um, but twenty-one, twenty-three's got some issues in terms of being where we thought it would be. Next slide, David. So what do we do now? We wait for the next forecast. That's November eighteenth. Uh, we'll be watching that closely. And the other key point here is we'll wait to see what legislative fiscal comes up with. So they'll come up with their rollover budget, right, in terms of what they expect uh, department and program needs are throughout the state, including, uh, school districts. And, um, that'll, that'll be a good sign or a good indication of where we are compared with the revenue that's anticipated. So um, if you were to look at it as, as, um, probably as simply as possible, uh, revenue dollars will be up in the twenty-one, twenty-three biennium, but will they be up enough to pay for cost increases in the twenty-one, twenty-three biennium? That will be what we'll be looking for and paying attention to as we move forward. And that concludes my presentation, presentation, Chair Tim Chuck.
Okay, I didn't mean to cut you off before, Mike. I really didn't, but.
That's okay. I wanted to give you some good news.
And thank you. We, we can all use some good news. So thank you. And we appreciate you being so proactive and keeping us up to date. So. All right, that's it for reports. Now we're gonna move on to discussion items, and first up is, uh, Pat McCurry. And Pat, thank you and your team for, we're staying up with this so late, and um, we're really looking forward to, to hearing about this. So, uh, the floor is yours.
Sure thing. Thank you very much, and good evening, board members. I'm actually on for two discussion items tonight, and, uh, I'm gonna address the second one first because it's more informational, and I want to make sure to leave time for any questions after the more substantive and action-oriented item. Uh, at the August tenth School Board Work Session, I presented a district equity update and outlined a number of efforts underway throughout the district in working toward our ability to ensure racial equity and actively anti-racist learning spaces. In partnership with the School Board's Equity Committee, I look forward to forming and facilitating an Equitable Policies Task Force. I'll offer the board a proposal for the coming October work session that will suggest immediate charges, including the creation and enactment of the task force, the development of an, of a district anti-racist vision, development of a proposed board policy on bias incidents and hate speech, and an accompanying proposal for response protocols, and a review of the Student and Parent Handbook to analyze how such a policy can be actualized. I look forward to working alongside the board and facilitating such a task force and to ensuring our ability to offer anti-racist spaces and experiences for our students, families, and staff. And now I'm excited and proud and heartened to be able to inhabit the space in front of you to offer you this resolution in support of acknowledging Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday of October, beginning this year in two thousand and twenty, and acknowledging November as Native American, Alaska Native Heritage Month within the Beaverton School District. I want to intentionally acknowledge that I'm able to offer you this resolution as a lifelong Oregonian, who is myself a forced guest on land that was taken from its original inhabitants. It's important to acknowledge these moments where we have the opportunity to both acknowledge and actively repair historical harms. As the administrator in the Office of Equity and Inclusion, I see this resolution as a specific and actionable opportunity to prove our commitment to anti-racism. In nineteen seventy-seven, the idea of Indigenous Peoples' Day was proposed by Native Nations to the United Nations as a way to acknowledge and honor the historic and continued lived experiences, contributions, and struggles of our world's first nation's people. In two thousand and sixteen, the city of Beaverton adopted a similar resolution acknowledging the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day, urging partner institutions to do the same as a way of acknowledging, honoring, and supporting, and celebrating our, our community. In two thousand and seventeen, the Oregon Legislature passed Senate Bill Thirteen, Tribal History, Shared History, directing the ODE and all school districts to implement a K-12 Native American curriculum developed by the nine federally recognized tribes in Oregon. In education, we know that there are significant improvements in engagement, development, and achievement among students when they are able to see themselves mirrored in the people, curriculum, and values reflected in their school district. We know that grades improve, that graduation rates improve, and that social and emotional well-being improves when we actively and intentionally ensure that students are seen. We also know that when we actively, intentionally, or unintentionally invisibilize students by not acknowledging their lived identities and experiences in our values and actions as a public system, then we not only fail to see those gains, we see data that affirms a disproportionately harmful impact on access, achievement, opportunity, advancement, and well-being. With this rev- resolution, we have an opportunity to ensure that our American Indian and Alaska Native students and community feel seen and supported. And we have an opportunity to affirm and enact our commitment to anti-racism for all of our students, and to model how to actively work toward the repair of harm and the affirmation of the lived identities of our students. We have an opportunity to intentionally celebrate all Indigenous members of our community, and to affirm the month of November as an opportunity to learn about, honor, and celebrate the specific experiences and contributions of our Native American and Alaska Native community members, and to affirm the ongoing learning opportunities provided by the implementation of Senate Bill Thirteen. I want to take this moment to introduce Brandon Culbertson, our Title VI Coordinator in the district. Uh, Brandon, I want to thank you for your recent service to our country and welcome you back from your recent deployment. Brandon has been an invaluable partner in the drafting of, of this resolution and in facilitating the partnership with our Native American parent community. Thank you, Brandon.
Uh, thank you for that kind introduction, Pat. Appreciate it. Thank you, Chair Tim Chuck, Superintendent Grotting, and board members. Habah, wahbaha, nananaw, venisit, datnanak, hakjethi, inonai, nananee. Hello, uh, my name is Brandon Culbertson. My Indian name is Thunder Bear. I come from the Northern Apahu and Fort Peck tribes. At, uh, present, my job, uh, in the Beaverton School District is the Title VI AIN Coordinator. And I've had the pleasure of, um, being afforded the opportunity to advocate at the state level for, uh, for AI and students, um, through the ODE, uh, AI and Advisory, um, committee, where I serve as the vice chair. And I would just say that the committee is very excited about this resolution and this work. It has been a long time coming, but, um, we're just all really excited that Beaverton has the opportunity to, um, make this positive change and kind of set a positive example for other districts in the state. Um, I'm a product of the Beaverton School District, having gone through from K to twelve. And I've had some interesting experiences in, in my, um, in my time in the district. Stepping from like in kindergarten where, you know, the construction, choose your, choose what you want to be, an Indian or a pilgrim, um, make, make the head dress, onto high school where I received, um, a bad grade in AP history because I challenged our professor, our teacher, rather, uh, on manifest destiny and some of the like bad atrocities that took place. So I wish back then there was a document like this that, um, I could point to to advocate for myself, but that, uh, or, you know, that really kind of demonstrated the importance of, um, representation and inclusion and addressing historic erasures, uh, assimilation, really just something that made me feel supported. Um, so kind of coming full circle and being in this position is, is really kind of a beautiful experience, and I'm just so grateful for the opportunity to, uh, speak in front of all of you about this. And this leads me to where I want to talk about, um, community access points and, uh, serving in the Title VI um, coordinator position. I've had numerous parents come up and say that, that the program that we serve is their access point to their, for their family, to, to culture, to connection, to community, um, to their child's identity relative to Native American, um, ancestry. So that's really powerful, and, um, it's a big responsibility. This resolution will help in that work as well as to make those students feel seen. Um, I'm gonna quickly address Columbus. Uh, you know, he had a litany of human rights abuses against him. He, he didn't discover America. Even from the European perspective, he was five hundred years too late. You know, Leif Erikson beat him. What he did set up was the transatlantic slave trade. That's what he laid the roots for. Um, you know, it's not like overturning the Constitution. It was in the third. You know, it's not like overturning the Constitution. It was in the thirties that the United States kind of took it as a national holiday. So that's that's that. We can go into great detail, but I'm mindful of the time. And then there is a long history of natives having a very terrible experience in educational spaces. They were used as a primary facilitating locations for assimilation. And it's a lived experience. Personally, my grandmother went to a boarding schools as well as my mother, but my grandmother's experience was was really heinous. She was, for the most part, an indentured servant when she wasn't picking potatoes or ironing. You know, she she was she was not studying. So that's unfortunate, and that mirrors many of our family's lived experiences. So it it just speaks volumes that that that's acknowledged and that, you know, we move forward in a good way. And that's part of the reason why there is historically has been low graduation rates and high truancy rates. But I do want to share something positive. And this was, thank you, John Bridges, for 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 going the extra mile and digging up this data for us. It wasn't easy to do, but in two thousand six, rather, two thousand seventeen, sixty five percent of our, that's what our native grad rate was, was sixty five percent, that's self identified. But when students listed their tribe, that rate goes to ninety four percent. And and that rate is increased to ninety six percent when you look at the students that were involved in the Title Six Program. So it just goes to show how important culture and community and positive self identity can play in student achievement. And then, once again, thank you all for your time. I know it's late. And and with that, I am going to go ahead and mute.
Brandon, thank you very much. And I also want to just take a moment to acknowledge and appreciate publicly the work of Brad Parker, Matt Highfield, and Toshiko Mauricio in helping us with this resolution. And sorry, and Chris Rempel as well, who we were lucky to have fill in for Brandon while he was deployed. We wanted to make sure to leave time for any questions that might arise. So that's what Brandon and I wanted to present, and then we'll turn it over to the Board.
I don't have any questions. I just want to commend you for your work, and I support the resolution. It's about time. And I'm also enthusiastic about working with you on these efforts to become a more inclusive environment and supportive for all of our students, especially those of color.
Thank you, Donna.
Board members, any other either about the resolution or our equitable policies? We've got things going on. I too want to publicly acknowledge Pat, Brandon in your absence, but Matt and Brad, I mean, this they have been working on this for well over a year. Families have been working on this. And so this was not done something that was done lightly. It was done with a lot of thought and care. And so I'm just very, very glad that it is it has come before the Board and that we get a chance to take action on it later, later in our meeting.
Thank you.
So with that, I think we're, oh, Leanne, go ahead. Oh, and Ann too. I'm sorry, Ann first.
I like Donna, support the resolution, and I'm excited about the policy work going forward as well. I'm curious about, and I guess, given the hour and everything, I don't need to hear about it tonight. But I am interested to know how this will be implemented, rolled out to our schools, because I really appreciated Brandon bringing out, you know, like, we want to do something that's a positive step. And I know that in order for this to be meaningful for both our native students as well as their peers, that we need a lot of teacher support and family support that's going out district wide. So I look forward to seeing that another time.
And just in quick response to that, I really appreciate you asking. We talked a lot in the drafting about this or the drafting of this resolution, that oftentimes resolutions can be well intentioned, but they can have the impact of tokenizing an issue in a situation. Our feeling was that the timing of this with the implementation of specifically the Senate Bill thirteen curriculum, that this this serves as a more than symbolic, I don't want to just say symbolic, but it serves as an impetus for us to do that work. It is, it allows ourselves to hold ourselves accountable for doing this work and to hold teachers accountable in their classrooms, as Brandon said, to change the practices of how our Native American and Alaska natives have been represented in our curriculum and in our schools and to to continue to do that, not just on the second Monday of every October or during the month of November, but throughout the year. And so we actually, again, we'll save time tonight, but we have talked about exciting plans to work with students, in particular, our American Indian Alaska Native students, to to help develop like what what these lessons can and should look like. Brandon, I'm doing all the talking. I don't know if you want to jump in with anything.
What I would say is the strength behind this resolution is that it moves beyond performative talk into actionable, solution based measures in relation to just supporting S B thirteen work. You know, it does acknowledge historical ramifications, but really the strength in it lies in in its tie to that S B thirteen work. And that speaks to tribal sovereignty as well as our partnership with our community.
Leanne?
Great work on the resolution. I also am very supportive of it. Pat, I just have a quick question on the Equitable Policies Task Force. And would raise the question, are we going to make sure we get some student voice on that task force?
So Leanne, I have to acknowledge my inherent bias as a recently out of the classroom teacher. That might be something that I would insist upon. Not might be, it is something. I think because we've heard so much from students, specifically with regards to the the issue of hate speech and bias incidents and a need to be able to document those somehow and respond to them. I think we would be missing a tremendous opportunity to not solicit the voices of students in that. So like, we haven't figured out the details yet of what that task force is going to look like, but I would I insist seems like a strong word to use when my boss is in the room, but I wouldn't want to do it without the voice of students involved.
Great. That's wonderful to hear. Thank you.
Sure.
And great work on this.
Thank you. Well, it was a joint effort, and it's been a long time in the process. So we're excited to see the support.
Yeah, I'm sorry. This is Toshiko Marisi. I just wanted to make a shout out to Pat McCurry. Thank you so much for all the work that you've put into this resolution. And Brandon, thank you also. And I just wanted to to share that Brandon was actually recently nominated and approved as Vice Chair for Oregon Department of Education's American Indian Alaska Native Advisory Committee. It's a three year term, and he also serves as the Vice President of the O I E A's Executive Board. So anyway, just congratulations on your nomination.
And just lastly, again, know how late it is, but just as a point of personal privilege here, it's it's my my heritage I'm very proud of, and I my family is not one of the Oregon tribes, but it's with with great pride that that I've been able to be a part of this and see this this go forward and just really appreciate all the work that everybody put into this and to acknowledge our Indigenous students and our Native American students going forward. So it's with great personal pride that I look forward to seeing this being referred on the consent agenda. So.
Thank you.
So with that, we will move into action items. We're getting there. We're getting we're getting to the end, folks. The first action item is we get to nominate one of our own to the OSBA Board, Leanne Larson. Leanne has served on the board with distinction for many terms, and she wants to return, and we want her to return. She really represents Beaverton very well in in her role there and obviously as being past president of the Oregon School Board Association. And she's just a great advocate for the student voice always, but for many other things. So with that, we're going to need to discuss if there is any kind of discussion or if there is a motion.
Chair, I moved with with a pride that the Beaverton School District Board nominate Leanne Larson for OSBA Board of Director, position fifteen. So she can say that great work she's done.
All right, Diana, it's been properly moved and seconded. I don't know if it was Donna or Tom. We all we all jumped in. We all seconded, of course. So it's been properly moved and seconded that we nominate Leanne Larson to the OSBA Board Director, position number fifteen, I think it is. Yes, number fifteen. And with that, we'll take a roll call vote, and you can either signify by saying aye, nay, or abstain. Anne, Brian?
Aye.
Eric Simpson?
Aye.
Donna Tyner?
Aye.
Leanne Larson?
Aye.
Susan Greenberg?
I'm proud to say aye.
Vice Chair Tom Colette?
Very proud to say aye, too.
And Board Chair Becky Tenchep, and I. That's unanimous consent. Congratulations, Leanne. We will get your paperwork in.
I did. I got it in. Thank you.
Well, we have to do our paperwork, too, though.
Oh, that's true. You do.
We will. We will get that taken care of. So. All right, now on to the second agenda item. We're going to be talking about an architectural contract for Vos Elementary. And just board members, as us going forward, we have we have Josh here to talk, we have Carl, and we have Principal Singleton from Vos. And Monique, we know how late and we know how long all of your days have been, but thank you for being here with us in case we have, in case we have any questions. So we appreciate that. So.
Before we go.
Go ahead, Carl. Go ahead.
I believe we skipped an item.
Oh, we did? I've lost my agenda, that's why.
It's the Indigenous Declaration.
Part of the consent agenda.
Okay, it didn't. It's coming up on Board Book as a separate item for me. Sorry.
Okay.
I just didn't want us to miss it. It was a great op- great opportunity to hear that.
It was part of the consent agenda. So now I just see on my agenda that the next thing is the approval of of the architectural drawing.
Perfect. We want to move forward. So.
We want to. We want to go. We want to go forward here. So so Carl or Josh, if you want to say anything, and then we can hand it over to Eric.
Good evening, Chair Tim Chuck School Board. Josh Gamm is Chief Facilities Officer. I'll kick it off. What you have in the Board Packet is an update to the Situation Sheet that was briefed to you at the August tenth School Board Meeting. And at that meeting, the Board requested that we revisit the topic after we had our enrollment numbers from the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year. And so in that update Situation Sheet, we have the latest enrollment numbers for Vos. And we also included the average class size that's in the paper. The enrollment information is current as of September twenty first, and the average class size information is current as of September twenty second. You also received an email from Monique Singleton, Principal at Vos. Monique, thank you again for joining us and having it late. And in her email, just kind of summarized, she gave you information on her allocation of classroom teachers. She gave you that number. She gave you the number of classrooms that were at Vos and what accommodations a school have to make in terms of utilizing their space, especially when all the students return to the building and when we get to that in person instruction. I'd like to thank Board Members Anne Brian, Susan Greenberg. Thank you for your emails and your questions. I'm going to go into that now and cover cover those questions. Anne, you had five questions. Susan, you had one question, and and one of those questions overlaps with Anne. So I'm going to cover the first three that Anne had shared, and just to share with the Board about what those questions are from Anne. Anne, you had asked about the details, the types of classrooms a proposal is to provide. So with the permanent classrooms, as Monique noted in her email, Vos is current, they're going to make accommodations for the pre K class. They're they're going to work in a former tech lab. And then the dual language kindergarten is in a flex space, and their third grade is in that in a flex space. And so are really that we're our new permanent classrooms are going to focus on the pre K K type classrooms. That's just kind of the focus as we move forward with with the design. You had asked a question about what is the current configuration of Vos? That is, what's the the number and type of each classroom? So like Monique said, she has thirty classrooms, but specifically for that breakdown of the thirty, there's twenty two grades, one through five classrooms. You have five kindergarten classrooms, and then you have three of the sped classrooms. And like Monique said, they do have flex areas that they use. There are five flex areas that are in there that can be used as teaching spaces. Next question that you had, how long would we expect construction to take to build the four classrooms? So once we do a contract award, we get through the design, we get through permitting, we do contract award, we're looking at about six months to do construction. So our goal would be by the summer of twenty twenty one to get as much of the work done as possible. So if we were to get approval tonight, we'd get through the design, we'd get through permitting, and then we would we would target that end of summer of twenty twenty one, get most of that work completed. The next two questions, I'm going to turn over to Carl. And then, again, Susan, there's an overlap in the question that you had. So Carl?
Yeah, it's a great question. We wanted to include that in the Situation Sheet, and that is the forecast from P S U ten years out. It's about a hundred and twenty student difference in terms of a decrease overall at Vos in the next ten years. Given COVID nineteen, I my crystal ball is completely cloudy, if not completely broken at this point in time. But even if we did see that level of decrease in that school facility, I see some significant opportunities ahead for us. Vos has been a model school in terms of pre K. And I can't speak from Monique, but I bet you that if she had the opportunity to expand pre K options within her school for her community in one of our poorest communities, I think she would leap at that opportunity. So it's she currently has two pre K classrooms there. If she had the opportunity to be able to expand that further and add more sessions, I don't think she'd have any difficulty in filling those slots from her own community. And if so, I'm sure there's from Greenway or other schools just very close by to be able to help fill those. In addition to that, they do have two specialized programs in that facility. And again, that helps to round out that whole school community and context throughout. We don't foresee those going away, have no desire to have those move off site. So it just continues to allow us to be able to give us a full scale service and program model for students. And I yes. Oh, thought somebody was asking a question. So I think there's some significant opportunities ahead. Again, those are decisions that will have to be made within teaching and learning. But I certainly see that Monique has had great success with pre K. It's actually she has got a model teacher, and I have watched that teacher's videos many, many, many times in terms of her expertise. So I think there's great hope there. And then, secondly, there was a, sorry, the final question that Anne had is an enrollment update. As you know, we're just two weeks in. Everything is just all over the board. I am slated to give that update to you on on October twenty sixth. That's a whole month out. So I will probably send something else out to you before that is an intermediary, just so you have a sense. But we'll do an official one for the Board on October twenty sixth. So. Josh, back to you.
Or is that it? Yeah. So I would like to, Monique, if you had anything to add, because at this point, I'm going to turn it over to the Board for any questions. And again, thank you for submitting the email with the information. I know you have a lot on your plate. We appreciate that.
Whatever they if they have questions, I'm happy to help.
Okay, so we are wrapped up, School Board. If you have any questions that you'd like to ask, we're here to and happy to take them.
I got one comment too, Josh.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so we we did discuss this one at the Citizens Bond Advisory Committee. And so, you know, they looked at it and they thought that the deal, the proposal was very reasonable, kind of an economy of scale valuable to do since they had mirrored footprints at multiple schools that a design like that would be very valuable, potentially for multiple schools, not only Vos, but others. And, you know, so they looked at the contract amount, and they were, it looked like it was a good insurance and to get ready for possible capacity expansion. As well as like the Citizens B A C, you know, we we know we're scared of putting portables up. We're opposed to having portable. So they thought this would be a very cost effective, smart option to leverage the design we have at Vos to, you know, if we have to build those four classrooms, it looked like a reasonable option. So those are the discussions that the, you know, the five or six members of the Citizens Bond Advisory Committee were pretty bullish on this, that proposal.
Yeah, thanks, Eric. And like you said, Bond Accountability Committee, they were briefed on it, and they they basically endorsed that, you know, the decision that we had and the proposal that we had to start with the design. They understand that this is not bond program reserve dollars that we're using, that They understand that this is not bond program reserve dollars that we're using, that this is the CET dollars that we're setting aside. And that, that decision was made just to kind of get this started and move it in that direction. So that when we do get to, we have to come back to the School Board to get approval for the construction. We will not move forward without your approval on that. And when that time is ready, you know, once we get through the design, we'll brief the Bond Accountability Committee again, have them informed so that then we can look at using program reserve dollars to help fund the construction side of this project.
So Donna, you had a question?
Well, I had a question. I just, I appreciate the additional information that we didn't have last month and the clarity around it. So in looking at it from the equity lens, to me, it makes, makes sense considering the economies of scale achieved and, you know, in order to support our pre-K students and also our local community.
Thank you.
Susan, did you have something?
I'm in agreement with Donna, so that's all I was going to say. I appreciate all of Monique's hard work, not just with this, but with everything she's doing right now.
And Leanne?
Um, my question, I don't really have a question around what was presented tonight, but more for in the future, when the 2 million request comes back. I think it would be helpful for me as a board member. And I know that it'll go through the bond accountability first, but to see what other projects are vying for those reserves because they're limited. And we have other areas that are quite needy and they haven't received any attention. So just as a precursor to those conversations, it would just be helpful to have, is there a list of 20 projects? Is there a list of two? And what do each of those look like and what are their scopes? I think that would help the board along, rather than sometimes I think we feel like we have a little bit of a tunnel vision because we only get this much of the information. And we know that you on the staff have this much, but we don't see that. And so it's hard to bring us along sometimes. So apologize for the clunkiness of this process, but we just want to make sure all our ducks are in a row.
Absolutely, Leanne. We have talked about that with the BAC and we have proposed projects for bond program reserve. And this would be part of that conversation with them and then with you. And we can, we'll be prepared to talk to that when the time comes.
And I just think also too, by for for public disclosure, I mean, not everyone's going to go look at our website to see the project, the progress of our existing projects. But, you know, maybe at another School Board meeting, we just kind of give a quick overview, you know, how things are going at Acma and some of the other big, big projects that we're working on. And when we believe those things will be completed would be good, just so it's in the the public record.
On a perfect timing, because coming up at your boardwork session, you'll be getting a full slate of information about this.
Ann, you had a comment?
Yeah, you know, as we've received this proposal, I've been reminded of the people who came when Vos, prior to Vos's construction and looking at the original design and their frustration that the building was too small. So I, in in many ways, I share their frustration that we're having to address the problem this way. I'm also glad that we are taking a deep look at how we can continue to support our students, particularly our early learners. The kindergarten and pre-K spaces are different that in order to do the right job for our kids. And so I think this is a really great opportunity for us to build model spaces for that, that we can make the best of a capacity issue and really do the right thing to serve our students. And because of that, you know, I feel like although it is hard to bring us along, I think it is the right thing to do, but it is really important to me that we, we take advantage of a crisis to do the right thing.
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
So my only comment is this has been a long process and I think we've learned a lot from the process. And I think we've learned a lot how important it is that we all be communicating and be on the same page. But I agree with a lot of things that that Ann said. We knew when we heard when we built that, that we were going to have more of a need. We, as a board, asked that we use title dollars and we use that pre-K. And Monique and her team stepped up to it and and they need more space. And we luckily have this CTE and we don't throw around money easily. And this was, you know, a discussion that needed to be had. And we'll know going forward, you know, how important it is that we bring the board along with this and working with the BAC. So Eric, is there something that you would like to do at this time?
Yeah, I moved that the board approved the contract with DLR Group for the design of additional classrooms at Vos Elementary School for a total not to exceed $145,000.
Second.
And properly moved and seconded that the board approved the contract with the DLR Group for the design of additional classroom at Vos Elementary for a total and not to exceed $145,000. So at this time, we'll call the roll. You'll answer with an aye, nay, or abstain. Ann, Brian?
Aye.
Donna Tyner?
Aye.
Eric Simpson?
Aye.
Leanne Larson?
Aye.
Susan Greenberg? Susan?
I said aye.
Oh, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. And Vice Chair Tom Colette?
Aye.
Chair Becky Tenchuk, aye. With that, the motion passes with unanimous consent. All right, Ms. Larson?
Chair Tim Chuck, I move to approve the consent agenda. My second.
And properly moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. I'll call the roll again, signify by saying aye, nay, or abstain. I'll mix it up here, see if you guys are paying attention. Susan Greenberg?
Aye.
Leanne Larson?
Aye.
Donna Tyner?
Aye.
Ann, Brian?
Aye.
Eric Simpson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Tom Colette?
Aye.
Chair Tenchuk, aye. With that, the consent agenda passes. Is there any board communication? I was going to start off this night, we've got this shout out, but we got this shout out, it's almost 10 o'clock. So for everyone that's gone way above, we'll find another way to recognize those folks that are just going above and beyond and how much the board appreciates the work that that they are doing. So any closing remarks, Superintendent Grodding?
Just a special shout out to all the presenters tonight and a special shout out to our School Board for being so supportive. I think Beaverton's in a, in a great position and it's because of your leadership. So thank you for your support. Thank you for the support of our staff.
Well, thank you, everybody, for being on late this evening and we'll see you again in just a few, just two weeks. And with that, the School Board work that we are adjourned and our next meeting will be the work session on Tuesday, October 12th at 3 o'clock. With that, we're adjourned.